Welcome to the Millbrae City Council Meeting of March 10, 2020. We have a walk call place.
All council members are present.
Please stand and join me in the part of the audience.
Mr. Sora.
Okay, first on the agenda, we have a presentation by Gatepath CEO, Brian Nider.
Probably easier to use this.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Can you hear me? All right, so I'm here to tell you a little bit about Gatepath. We're a 100-year-old organization, celebrating our 100th year right now. Revenues are about $22 million. We're one of the largest providers of services to individuals with developmental disabilities in the Bay Area. And at $22 million, that puts us in the top 2% nationally for nonprofits. We have 13 locations in Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties, and over 300 dedicated staff members, and we reach about 15,000 families and individuals every single year. Our core programs serve roughly 1,200 individuals on a daily basis. Wrong way. Let me do this again. Operator error. We provide a lifespan of services. So we start with early intervention. We provide therapy services, occupational, speech, and physical therapy. In addition, we have three inclusive preschools, serving roughly 300 kids in an inclusive setting. We have adult programs. We have a family resource center. We have employment programs. So we see kids in the very beginning when they get a diagnosis and all the way into adulthood and seniorhood. Our mission, vision, and values, our focus is really on acceptance, respect, and inclusion for people of all abilities. That's really what our mission is all about in everything we do, providing opportunity for those that we serve. Happy to say we have a great relationship with the city of Millbrae. You know, we provide an opportunity, like I said, in our preschools for kids to learn and grow together. We have hundreds of children receiving therapeutic and family support services every year. We have community access and group volunteers here in Millbrae with local businesses, and I'll have a slide here in a second that shows you some of our local supporters. And we have employment and community partners right here in Millbrae as well. So we've got the Magnolia, which is an employment site, Target, Trader Joe's. We actually work with Millbrae Rec Department. So it's great to have community support for our mission of inclusion, and we're very, very appreciative of that. So one of the things that, just to make everyone aware of, where we can use support, is around a cooperative living and housing model. We just opened up a co-op housing in San Mateo. It's the first new housing and cooperative setting for adults in San Mateo County ever. And it's a, you know, we know about the housing crisis generally, but the folks that we serve, it is really very, very serious. In Santa Clara County, in two months, six homes closed, which is 36 individuals without a place to live. So us being able to add 10 new beds in San Mateo was a big win for individuals. Opening up employment opportunities, looking for volunteer opportunities, access to facilities like we have with Millbrae, with Parks and Rec is really important. And then improving state and federal funding. People may not know this, but California, fifth-largest economy in the world, is 50th out of all 50 states in per capita funding for individuals with developmental disabilities. Last time I checked, California is not 50th in terms of cost of living, so you can see what the impact is for the folks that we serve on that lack of funding. Voter accessibility, and that would also include now with the census. So we're working closely with San Mateo County overall to ensure voter access and for census, making sure the folks that we serve are a part of that. And last is just improved transportation options for the individuals we serve, so that they can have full access to our community at large. And then on May 14th, depending on how things evolve with the COVID-19, we're currently planning to have our Big Power Possibilities event on May 14th at the Marriott Airport, and we'll have Henry Winkler as our emcee and Dr. Temple Grandin as our keynote speaker. So this is an event we've been running for several years, and this year is obviously, for the 100th celebration, a big, big deal. So I'm happy to take any ticket purchases if anybody wants to come up to me after we're done. It's a big event and an incredible celebration of the folks that we serve. Just a little snippet, we have the individual we recognize each year in our employment program. It's a gentleman who works at the airport Marriott. He commutes four hours every day to work and never misses a day. He comes from the East Bay for two hours in the morning, taking four different transportation connections to get there. He walks from Millbrae over to the airport Marriott and has perfect attendance for his job. I think everybody would love to have an employee like that. So we're going to recognize him and his good work at Marriott this year, and it's always a special event to see the folks that we serve being called out for their commitment to their job and their community. So with that, thank you again, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for letting me share our story with you. Again, 100 years is pretty remarkable for any organization, and we're proud to do the work and serve a wonderful community right here in Millbrae. Thank you. One last acknowledgement. We have the Gatepath Auxiliary, our president for the auxiliary here. The auxiliary's been supporting our mission for 70 years, which is fantastic.
It just occurred to me to add that my disabled daughter, who's 36, has been involved with Gatepath since she was two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you could just wait there, just one moment, please. I have a couple of commendations for you.
Great. I may ask for a paparazzi here to take a quick picture.
Sure, yeah.
Jim, would you mind? There's a camera ready. All right.
Okay. Whereas Gatepath, a nonprofit established in 1920 to improve the health and welfare of children with developmental disabilities in San Mateo County, celebrating its milestone 100th anniversary in 2020. Whereas over the years, Gatepath has developed a large portfolio of services that today support individuals with special needs and developmental disabilities of all ages, from infants to seniors. Whereas Gatepath, with 300 dedicated staff members, provides direct services at 13 locations in both Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties. Whereas Gatepath, now one of the largest nonprofits serving the disabilities community on the peninsula, impacts more than 15,000 families, caregivers, and individuals each year with its programs. Whereas Gatepath's lifespan of services include developmental screenings for children, early intervention and pediatric therapy, inclusive preschools, social and recreational opportunities for youth, employment training and placement, as well as community integration and independent living skills for adults. Whereas Gatepath is very proud to celebrate 100 years of creating a world where people of all abilities are accepted, respected, and included in all aspects of society, from the classroom to the workplace, and is committed to ensuring inclusive opportunities are available for all decades to come. Now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council here in Dubai, congratulate and commend Gatepath's 100th anniversary and Gatepath Auxiliary's 70th anniversary.
Thank you so much.
So thank you very much for the important need that you fill in the...
We do this in seven hands.
Yes, yeah.
I'll go in seven hands.
I guess so. But you obviously serve an incredible need here in the community.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all the hard work you do, and look forward to continue working with you, and would love to have you back at a future council meeting as well.
Thank you. I'll be back for the 200th anniversary.
Okay. Yes. Let's stand actually in front of the podium here.
All right, okay. Put the mayor in the middle.
Thank you so much. Oh, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
And can we have Marta Bookbinder from the League of Women Voters join us at the podium as well?
I must be the news.
Yes. So we celebrated an important day the other day, Women's, International Women's Day on March 8th. And one thing that's very important here in the year 2020, it's actually the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment guaranteeing the women's right to vote across the country. So obviously, huge landmark and wonderful to be celebrating 100 years. Wish it could be much longer than that, but we greatly appreciate you've been able to join us here tonight, and also for all the work that the League of Women Voters does to increase voter participation and provide valuable information to voters. Whereas in 1975, during International Women's Year, and United Nations began celebrating March 8th as International Women's Day. And whereas International Women's Day is a time to reflect on progress made, to call for change, and to celebrate acts of courage and determination by ordinary women who have played an extraordinary role in the history of their countries and communities. And whereas during this historic year 2020, we celebrate the centennial of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, votes for women ratified and signed into the record. And whereas in 2020, the League of Women Voters celebrates its 100th anniversary, and the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County dones more than 700 other local and state chapters to celebrate this historic milestone. And whereas as we look to a vibrant future on the threshold of our next 100 years, the League members across North and Central San Mateo County continue to recruit and invite members and activists who share the League's commitment to making democracy work. And whereas the League's historic commitment to register, educate, and mobilize voters is not only stronger, but more effective than ever, utilizing such tools as vote411.org, a cutting-edge election information website utilized by millions of voters each election cycle. Now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim March 8th, 2020, as International Women's Day and the Centennial of the 19th Amendment, and congratulate the League of Women Voters on their 100th anniversary.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much to the council members and to the public that's here. Yes, my name is Marta Bookbinder. I'm the president of the North and Central San Mateo County League of Women Voters, so you come within our area. So it is a pleasure being here and having you present this for the many reasons, but more than anything, we have members of the League present here today. And some of them, we had a celebration, and some of them have served the League of Women Voters for 50 years or more, and one of them for 70 years or more. So we expect to be here in the 200th anniversary. All right, but it is a service that really helps all of you as you run for office, and all of the public as they make a choice who they want to vote for or what they want to vote for. And there are so many tools that we have developed. One of them that is not mentioned often, but is very crucial, is the Easy Voter Guide, that brings together the ballot arguments of what is being proposed, and gives the pros and the cons for the person to know, to read it in a very simple language, and then to make a choice in what is it going to cost, or what is the actual consequence of voting yes or voting no. And it makes a big difference, and the public really asks for it. This year, we have it in five languages. We had it for the primary, and I believe we're going to increase that for the November election to 10 languages. For many people who may not have English as their primary language, this is very important because it really gives them true access of information if they need it in the primary language. I am an immigrant. I was an elected official, and it makes a big difference. So thank you so much for celebrating with us. It makes a tremendous difference. Yes, thank you.
Congratulations as a former League, as a former board member. This is terrific. For the audience who may not be familiar with the League, they do the pros and cons. They're a nonpartisan organization. It is not Democrat, Republican, Green Party, anything like that. And growing up, my mom just celebrated her 50th year, and her award up here is a lifetime member now. So Mom is in the audience. She used to bring voter registration forms to the libraries, work on candidate debates, and the propositions, the pros and cons. They do an amazing job. They also, and they are always looking for new members, of all ages, and men are welcome too. We did a, you had a program here in Millbrae. They happened to meet in Millbrae once, about once a quarter?
No, we meet every month.
No, but you're in Millbrae about once a quarter, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so they meet up in the Millbrae Library, and a few years ago, they had somebody talking about the history of women, the suffrage fight. So tremendous book that Mom has read. I haven't had a chance yet, but hopefully we'll be doing more activities over the course of the next six months or so on women achieving the 100th right to vote. And, you know, even big things like Time Magazine has come up with their 100 list of influential women, the covers that could have been. So we've got a ways to go. I think the most amazing thing that we learned here is that women are not often represented in public places. So I am very happy that the city manager has agreed to let the city work, and we hope to work with the League on some kind of commemorative plaque for the city to recognize the 100th anniversary. So Mayor, sorry, I know we always like to keep moving, but I'd love to have a picture with anybody who's a League member or a woman who votes. Let's get a group picture up here.
There you go. Yes, yes, yes. Stand up in front of the podium, please. Want to come forward in front of the podium? No, 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 no.
Mom, you're coming back this way.
You're too short.
The podium makes a good move. Here you go.
Come forward, okay.
Sentimental.
Okay, okay, good.
Now we'll cut it off.
This will go in the new slide. She's right there. Who's tall?
Right here?
We might want to re... Can you see everybody back here?
Yeah, there's a couple people who...
Come on forward.
You guys all set up in the spread out a little bit? To your right. And to your right. There's another one right there.
Don't forget, if you want to join the League, we welcome men and women. Thank you.
Can make a quick announcement about that if you'd like.
I'm sorry. Do you want to?
Sure.
Two of the things that we're doing for, to celebrate the 100th anniversary of a woman's right to vote in federal elections. In California, we actually got the right to vote a year earlier. And believe it or not, our county was one of two counties that heavily fought it, San Francisco being the number-one county that fought to have, to allow women to vote. So interesting how communities turn themselves around. We're looking at trying to bring in some materials from the U.S. Congress, U.S. Library of Congress.
Bar Association.
I'm sorry?
American Bar Association.
Yeah, American Bar Association, but in conjunction with the U.S. Library of Congress. So we hope to have that display. We're working on some other activities. And if any of you are out there and want to help us, help is more than welcomed. We're looking at August in there. August is our council vacation in theory, but it is the actual anniversary, although California signed the paperwork in June, if I recall. So we've got a couple of dates. We can try to time this around. It's just a great year, and for young people out there, your vote matters. Get out there, register. There's a bunch of great things to be voting for this year, so please vote.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have the Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing. City Manager Williams?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hollibur, members of the city council. Tom Williams, city manager. Before I get started on my report, I'd like to bring to your attention a couple of addendum items for staff reports in the purple folder. Item number seven, there's a table that's been revised. In the original staff report, there was a, looked like a redacted set of numbers in a table. This is in regard to the Housing Element Implementation Report, item number seven. We didn't mean to, to redact it. It's just kind of not applicable the way the columns lined up. But we did add that in total, we do actually exceed our RENA numbers, as you can tell, and we have met our obligation through 2023 with a total of 800 and, almost 860 units. So wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, on item number eight, which is the public hearing item and the undergrounding for Rule 20, there's just a typo under the establishment of Undergrounding Utilities District that the March 10, 2020 public hearing, which was also advertised in the San Mateo County Times, is incorrect. And that those are the only changes. So moving on to city manager's report, real quick, starting March 12th, Census 2020 will be underway. There'll be information that's sent out by the U.S. Census Bureau to everyone living within the county to participate in filling out the quick census survey, either online, by mail, or over the phone. So please look that up, and that will go through the first part of April. So there's been a lot of communication from the city and the school district and the county, city of California, nationally, about making sure that everyone is counted. It's very, very important. Any information by law cannot be used for any other purpose but for counting the census, so we're encouraging everyone to make sure it's counted. There are fiscal impacts associated with our citizens and everyone being counted in terms of grant funding and allocation of federal and state funding, so extremely important. We also have information on the city's website regarding that. Now I'd like to bring to your attention a, some comments on something that's on everybody's mind, and that's COVID-19. We've been very diligent as a city in monitoring CDC, having communications with the county health officer, the school district, police and fire department, as well as other cities within the area. The city of Millbrae is following the protocol as outlined by Center for Disease Control CDC and the county health officer, which is, I think everyone knows, is to avoid close contact with anyone that's sick. If you are sick, please stay home, see your personal physician, or reach out to the county medical clinic, which is in the city of San Mateo. Avoid touching your face, particularly your eyes, nose, and mouth. Cover your nose and mouth when you cough and sneeze. Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects that may be contaminated with germs. Tonight, you can see that we've got our hand sanitizer. We see CDC recommends that, and Clorox-type products. Clorox-type products for cleaning. And then, again, going to our website, our homepage, Elaine can go through it, we have a letter from the mayor, just kind of indicating the status of everything, and information for all of our citizens that can log on. There's a video from the county. There's also protocols to stay healthy, and if you are feeling ill, steps to take in that regard. I'd also like to mention Marion Kwong is in the office tonight. I've reached out to Marion, she's volunteered to be our interpreter this evening, so I'd like to recognize Marion. Marion has been a tremendous help in translating a lot of the information that we've sent out over the last couple of days, last week, so we're able to get to everyone in our community the information. So, I'd really like to thank Marion for all the great work and efforts and volunteerism. So, thank you, Marion. A citizen that's really stepped up, so she's here tonight to help and assist with any needs for any translation. So, you know, every, I spent about six hours on this item today because it seems like every hour, things start to change. And so, we're going to continue to monitor the situation, and things could be changing, you know, really on a daily basis. So, all the citizens, make sure that you contact through via our website or the county information line, which is just simply 211. That is accessible to county medical officer and EOC that the county has set up during Also, just this evening, real quick, knowing that some of the protocol, if people are comfortable, social distancing up to six feet, we've set up a temporary comment line for people to participate remotely for tonight's meeting. They may continue this process through, through the COVID-19 outbreak. But anyone that would like to participate on any item in the meeting, they can simply email us at millbreycouncilmeeting@ci.milbury.ca.us. And we have, I think, five or six.
Sorry, Mr. Williams, it's council meetings, plural, correct? Because there was a.
It is.
Communication earlier today.
Thank you. Council meetings. Millbrae Council Meetings at ci.milbury.ca.us, and this is also on our website. And we do have everything translated for Chinese, Spanish, and English. So, with that, moving on, we do have several events that are coming up that we will continue to monitor and by the end of the week, make a decision on whether we continue to proceed or not. But with that, we do have a Millbrae Fix-It Clinic on March 21. This is at the library. Coaches will be in attendance to troubleshoot and help people fix their broken household items such as electronics, appliances, computer, toys, bicycles, and fabric items. That Fix-It Clinic will start at noon in the Millbrae Library, and you can also register by either our website or contacting 888-442-2666. Also, the Millbrae Art Show Contest is continuing to move forward and being planned until further notice. So, if anyone is interested in entering any of their art or creations into the Millbrae Art Show, the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisor Committee is encouraging submittals. And to submit an art entry, you can visit also the city's website or visit physically over at the Recreation Center for an entry form. The last day to submit entries is Friday, March 20. So, moving on to the agenda, after the City Manager's report, we have item number two, which is the Calendar of Events, Reports of Bills and Claims, report out by the city attorney of this evening's earlier closed session. Then we move on to item number three, Approval of the Meeting Minutes for the Regular Meeting of February 25. There are no oral reports this evening from any city committee or commission items. Finally, that, that's when we do have public communication, and that's where any citizen can speak to the city council for three minutes on any item not on the agenda this evening. Then we move to the Consent Calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar, starting with item number five. That's a review of the Quarterly Investment Schedule for the second quarter of fiscal year 2019-20. Item number six is approval of a street closure on the 300 block of Broadway for our 2020 Beats and Brews and Broadway Music Series. Item number seven is the Housing Element Progress Report Update for 2019. Then item number eight is a public hearing item. This is a recommendation to adopt a resolution establishing an Underground Utilities District in the city of Millbrae between Magnolia and Minorca Way. Under existing business, there are no existing business items, but we do have several new business items. Item number nine is to designate a funding agreement between the Millbrae Recreation Center and the Millbrae Community Foundation. Item 10 is to consider approval of an ordinance regarding the safe storage of firearms in residential units. Item number 11 is to accept the Fiscal Year 2019-20 Midyear Budget Report. Item number 12 is to consider the establishment of a citywide parking authority to oversee, manage, and operate and acquire and potentially finance public parking facilities. That's an information item. Item number 13 is an informational report on minimum wage and wage theft. After that, we move to council comments and adjournment. So, if there are no questions on the agenda, Ms. Mayor?
Sorry, Mr. Williams. Going back to the announcements regarding coronavirus, is there anybody here from the school district? Because I believe they were invited to make some comments about what the plans are and the response is at the schools.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, we did, we did invite the school district. We received confirmation that they would be in attendance earlier today, but just right before the meeting, I received a message that they will not be here tonight.
Okay, fair enough. But maybe tomorrow, can you follow up with them and see if we can get information out as quickly as possible, as I know there are concerns.
Yes.
Regarding a student at Taylor Middle School who may have been exposed.
Yeah, Mayor, we also reached out to try to schedule a meeting with the Subcommittee of the City Council and Subcommittee of the Full School Board, the quarterly meeting, to get together in light of the coronavirus and have that discussion. So, that meeting is being scheduled.
It's good to schedule the meeting, but it's probably more urgent to get the information out as soon as possible, so let's try to follow up.
And I guess on that, I'd like to be, yeah, clear that, again, the city is following all the protocols and getting information out, so.
Correct, and the city has no authority to close schools, public or private schools.
That is correct.
Okay. Yes, Councilman Lee?
Oh, so, we're not going to make any decisions here, but just for the public, what is, I think they'd like to be reassured that the city is on top of this, and I'm reassuring everybody in the city that we are monitoring this daily. We have one o'clock calls for the county, and we are trying to make determinations based on information from the county of what are the prudent steps to take. And the reason is that something like this, closing services and buildings and things, has long effects that affects many, many people. So, we don't want to make decisions just on fear and subjective thinking. We want to make sure everything's done objectively and that it doesn't cause unintended consequences. And just to read a quote from the county health, head of the county health, he at this time doesn't think that is a good idea to, he says that there is evidence of spreading, as we already know, but he's also not recommend that we, everybody quarantines because he thinks that's going to really hurt our communities much more than the benefits would be not as good. So, he's recommending at this time that we continue taking prudent steps and keep watching. And we are monitoring every day, and we're working with the school district to find out what's been happening. And we don't have any, we don't have any authority to close the schools, so people think that we, the city can just go and close the schools, we cannot. So, that's up to the school district, and we are working with them to help them out and make sure they get the right information. I understand that the superintendent of the county is going to make an announcement tomorrow, so we will wait for that. And I'm sure that, I have confidence, my colleagues at the school district, that they're making the right, trying to make the right decisions and ensuring that there is no opportunity for contaminations or widespread breakout in Millbrae. So, I ask that we be patient and that we not let our fears take hold of us, and that we all have a vested interest in the safety of our city. We have children, we have family here, and so we all are affected, and we don't, we don't take this lightly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I may, just on that, there are no reported cases in the city of Millbrae, and as of right now, on the website for the county, there's, I think, five reported cases right now countywide. So, again, we're continuing to monitor that, but I'd like to reiterate, there are no cases that have been reported in the city of Millbrae.
No confirmed cases.
Correct.
Okay. Councilwoman Pappin, very quickly, and then we need to move on.
Yes, and the governor emphasized that every jurisdiction is different, so we are carefully studying this. It's a very fluid situation, and everybody, it changes constantly, so we are on top of it as best we can. But just because one jurisdiction is doing something does not mean this jurisdiction does the same thing. So, please bear with us, and everybody, follow the instructions. Thank you very much.
Okay. We also have a report out from the closed session. We have Michael Conran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council, prior to this meeting, met in closed session to discuss a worker's complaint from a former employee, Don West. In that session, the council gave direction to their legal counsel.
Moving along, we have the approval of minutes from the meeting of February 25, 2020. We have a motion from Councilwoman Pappin and a second from Councilman Lee. Your votes, please. Gina?
The minutes passed unanimously.
Okay. Now, next on the agenda is public communication. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to speak on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. If you'd like to speak, please fill out a speaker slip. We do have five emailed public comments that came in for our special temporary email line, and our city clerk, Elena Swazo, will read them, and if you could please read who, the commenter for each one as well.
The first comment is from Marge Colapietro. Honorable member and council members, as of this writing, there are no confirmed cases of COVID-19 within Millbrae and four confirmed in San Mateo County with no fatalities. We must remain and practice due diligence at all times relative to our community members, working staff, and emergency responders. Please review upcoming scheduled meetings and events for the public, for our city commissions, committees, and civic groups. Also, work with our downtown businesses so that they will know and take appropriate steps to stay open and not run the risk of closures. You may wish to contact San Mateo County Health Department and request that all businesses in Millbrae receive safety guidelines and practices during this horrific and dangerous time. I also call your attention to those age 50, 60, and older, especially the Senior Advisory Committee, senior programs, and the self-help for the elderly meal program that takes place three times a week in the David J. Chakuti Community Room. My request is Mayor and Council, give some thought to assign City Manager Williams to dedicate a specific person solely for the day-to-day upkeep and public communications. We need to think of the good of the whole in our community, focus on knowledge and prevention, and ensure we have enough vital and emergency protective test equipment and supplies in time of need. Thank you for your consideration. Marge Colapietro, Mayor Emeritus, City of Millbrae, Community Advocate and Volunteer. The second comment is from Wen Yu. Hi. Is it possible for the schools to offer flexible learning plans? Currently, absence is still counted, and schools are large gatherings of people with high risk for virus spread. For families who can keep their kids at home, it will be useful if the home learning option is provided to reduce the risk for kids who have to go to school because parents have to work. Thank you, Wen Yu. The third comment is from Sean Peng. Questions for School District Superintendent and City Council. Number one, full account of what happened from superintendent. Number two, assessment of exposure. Which class was the student with exposure in? Which students were in same-room or group activities with that student? How many days of exposure? We do not need the contact student name, but need these other information. Number three, what's the plan to quarantine those students who had exposure to the contact student? So far, this is not done. Why let us take the risks of COVID-19 spread? Number four, if you only learned about it Sunday night, how can you effectively disinfect the whole school? What sanitation team was hired? What's the time spent and procedure for disinfecting? What's the sanitation company's credentials? Number five, can superintendent provide full information to school staff, parents, and city council so we are all educated to make informed decision? From what we know, the school staff knows even much less than parents, and that's not right. Their health is equally important. Number six, can superintendent initiate the steps of tailored teaching online before everything is confirmed or move spring break up? Number seven, can school district request the state's permission to not record the students' leave due to COVID-19 concern as absent? Can school district make its own decision on this without state approval? Many other schools already excuse students on this absence. Number eight, can both parties work with Millbrae Hospitals on clear procedure on how parents could work with doctor to order the COVID-19 test if they are concerned about the exposure? Mills Hospital staff is unsure how the test can be ordered. Thanks for your efforts in keeping our schools and communities safe. Sean Peng, CFA/CPA. And the last comment is from Daphne Gu. Dear Sir Madam, I understand you are meeting tonight to discuss coronavirus impact. As a concert parent, I would like to ask the school district to consider allowing students' homeschooling without being counted as absent. The recent cases suggest children are as easy to be infectious as adults. They might have no symptom and easy to recover, but infected children are as contagious as adults. As a family with senior residents with underlying health conditions, I am deeply worried. I think if you open the options to allow students to study at home for a few weeks, it will help prevent the virus getting spread and make families with elder residents much safer. Thank you for your consideration. Best regards, Peng. And that was the last comment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Swazo. And I know we cannot really comment on public comments, but at least for the comments that were specific to the school district concerns, perhaps we can forward those along to the superintendent as well for tomorrow morning? Okay. Councilman Lee, we need to move along.
I just want to give people a quick update, that if you, if you feel that you are, you are exposed to coronavirus and you want to have a test, you need to contact your primary physician and make arrangements to visit them so they can prepare to receive you. They will, they will do preliminary diagnosis, and then they will refer you or give you or test you. And that's what the county has set up. So, right now, there is no, no particular place you can go to get tested, so you need to contact your primary. or test you. And that's what the county has set up. So right now, there is no, no particular place you can go to get tested, so you need to contact your primary physician.
Okay. Seeing no other public comments, public comment is closed. So let's move on to the consent calendar. We have items five, six, and seven. Let me clear the board, please. So we have a motion from Vice Mayor Schneider and a second from myself. Your votes, please.
Items number five, six, and seven on the consent calendar passed unanimously.
Okay. I know we have several members in the audience tonight here, it looks like, are here to speak on item 10. And we have a couple of public comments that came in as well, so perhaps we can take that one next. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Council. So this item is to consider an ordinance adding a new chapter, 5.130, of the City of Millbrae Municipal Code entitled Safe Storage of Firearms in Residences. As part of the 2019-20 adopted City Council calls, staff is bringing forth this proposed ordinance modeled after San Mateo County's ordinance requiring safe storage of firearms in residences. In addition to the City Council directed preparation of the subject ordinance, the city's been approached by several Millbrae residents and their affiliated group, MOMS Demand Action, requesting such an ordinance be adopted. We've worked with members of that group to help us develop the ordinance, especially as it relates to the, to the penalties that are associated in, by any violation of the ordinance. So the Safe Storage of Guns Ordinance, as I mentioned, is similar to the ordinance adopted by San Mateo County. It was approved by the County Board of Supervisors in March of 2019. Several other cities, including Burlingame, South San Francisco, San Mateo, Redwood City, and others throughout, not only San Mateo County, but the region, have adopted similar ordinances. As is stated in the staff report, this particular ordinance has been tested in the Ninth Circuit as compliant with, with all federal rules and regulations and constitutionally valid. Mike Conran and his team have worked closely with us as well to craft the ordinance and do all the legal review. So in the proposed gun storage ordinance itself, it simply requires that weapons or guns in, in residences be stored safely in a locked container, or there's a trigger lock that is required. The difference between the City of Millbrae proposed ordinance and the county is, is any violation would be a civil assessment rather than a misdemeanor offense. The civil assessment that's proposed, the first violation would be $250. The second violation within that same year would be 500. Then a third violation within that same one year would be $1,000. So it's a civil penalty versus a criminal penalty. And this, again, working with MOMS Demand Action and their experience in assisting cities in such ordinance, felt that this is a more appropriate type of penalty, and it's equitable throughout the population and the community. So I'd like to further just note, for the record, that firearm injuries do cause significant public health impacts. It's proven that a loaded or unlocked gun in the home can increase the risk of gun-related injury and death. And according to reports published in 2008 in the New England Journal of Medicine, living in a home where guns are kept increasing the individual's risk of death by homicide by between 40% to 170%. Similarly, in 2004, a national study determined that the presence of guns in homes increased an individual's risk by death of homicide by 90%. So if adopted, the ordinance will be brought back to the City Council on March 24th for a second reading and take effect 45 days later on May 8th, 2020. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the City Council has, as well as our city attorney.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager. Can you go back to what you were saying about the civil penalty versus a misdemeanor and why the civil penalty was selected?
Yeah, so in, in working, again, with MOMS Demand Action and doing a little bit of research, the, the penalty, the civil penalty is more in line with avoiding any discriminatory, discriminatory actions in enforcing such an ordinance, and that it's more equitably allocated if there is an offense.
And do you think the $250 is enough of a penalty? Kind of feels like a slap on the wrist to me.
Well, I mean, that, that's a good question. So in, in researching this, some felt it was a little low, some felt that it was appropriate. So we went with our recommendation that 250, 500, and 1,000 within, within one year. So, you know, under, under general law, misdemeanor offense is six months in jail or $1,000. So this is at the discretion of the City Council. We could have the first penalty as high as $1,000 if, if that would be desirous of the City Council.
Okay. I mean, I, I think it would be better to start higher, maybe 500 as the first penalty, because, you know, $250, it's not going to pay for the, you know, officer to write the ticket, right? That's, and to process it. Okay. Councilwoman Pappin?
Yeah, I agree completely with the concept here, potentially, particularly with some of the specifics. I am concerned, I like what the City of Burlingame did here. This should not be probable cause to enter someone's home, and I don't find that clarity in this ordinance. So by somebody saying, hey, I was in that house and it wasn't there, firearm was not secure, that should not be the probable cause for law enforcement to enter someone's home.
Right. And none of those rules are affected by this. So we would always have to follow in terms of search warrants or entry.
Sorry, can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. None of those rules are affected by this, so, so this is not seeking to make a change in terms of probable cause or search warrants or any of that.
So this alone, somebody, you know, a neighbor says, hey, I saw this weapon in someone's home.
We'd need to determine if that was probable cause, and we may have to go to court to get a search warrant.
Well, I understand, though, that what Burlingame did was, that is not the initial prob, you need more than that as a single probable cause to enter someone's home. I mean, if somebody has a warrant out or something, that's very, very different here. But if somebody has a family heirloom they inherited and, you know, this was the only thing, I, I find that exceptionally concerning. So I think that Burlingame put in some sort of a clarification that this alone could not be probable cause to get a search warrant. I'd like that checked out.
Okay. We, well, I'm not familiar with that.
Could you elaborate on that a little bit? I don't understand.
Sure. I mean, okay, so, and I think a lot of people are in this situation where a family member inherits a weapon of some sort, and it could be an antique or something like that, it's displayed in such a way, it may be completely inoperable, but yet someone is in the home and says, hey, I saw this there and that weapon was not secure. That should not be the only probable cause for law enforcement to go get a search warrant and enter someone's home. It has to be a secondary aspect to the reason for entering somebody's home. I mean, if you.
Maybe we have the chief come up and give a comment about that.
Good evening. As it goes to criminal probable cause to get a search warrant, as far as I know in the state of California, it has to be a felony. So you don't get a civil one, we can't get a misdemeanor search warrant. I've authored hundreds of search warrants, and it's always been for a felony. So I don't know that we'd be able to do that even if someone told us that. Perhaps we could obtain a court order, but court orders don't typically allow you to enter and search.
Thank you for the clarification. That makes sense, then.
So it doesn't need to be cleared up here?
No, it wouldn't appear not, given the chief's representation, it would be clear that that would not.
The threshold for the standard of a search warrant, a state search warrant in California, anyway.
Thank you. That's still a secondary point here, not for you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think we have situations here where people, because this ordinance is passed, people are going to have to expend money, if they haven't already, to secure their weapons, which they should be doing. I don't think we want to really, we, we want to educate the public more than anything here so that we can have public safety and lower those numbers that were mentioned earlier here. I know also Burlingame's initial violation involved community service, which could be related, then, to education overall here. I don't think escalating the fines to $1,000 or more, or 500, is really getting the point across here. What we want to do is inform our public that there's an extreme danger by people having weapons within their homes. But I think the majority of people within our jurisdiction, they've, they either have them for various reasons, or they've inherited them in some way, shape, or form, and I don't think we want to really escalate this to a point. I think if we have, like, your initial evaluation as some sort of community-based service, then we can actually have them educating other people to the dangers that having a firearm within your residence would bring about. So I would disagree with the mayor on this. And, and I wonder here, too, for clarification, why is it, I mean, you choose to have one violation, then say it's a second violation, but they all have to be within one year?
That's typically what's done with administrative citations, if they, they're usually within a year. So the, one year after the first one, then you'd start back at 250 under the current.
That's interesting. I mean, hopefully, nobody gets more than one violation, period, but it seems like, and is it then per weapon, or is it just a single?
It would be per offense, per occurrence of, it's three weapons, and I think there would be three administrative signs for each, for each weapon. And then also, if I could clarify something, on the civil penalty also, as I understand it, there is no criminal record, and that was one of the other things that was brought to our attention, that on something like this, because there's also state law that also governs this, that if there is a violation, it is about education, it's not about necessarily about somebody having a criminal record violating the safe storage ordinance locally.
If you have a criminal record, you shouldn't have a weapon.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that, so if you're caught with this, instead of having a misdemeanor on your record, it's an administrative violation of the municipal code, because we're also protected by state law.
Right.
Which can be up to a felony.
And when does this take effect? How, how long do people have to comply with this? Because, again, I think we have several residents within this jurisdiction who will need education and time to comply with this. It doesn't seem to say.
Yes, ordinances are normally effective 30 days after adoption. The staff report actually had a mistake in it that we had tried to correct. I mean, typically, an ordinance is effective 30 days after adoption. The council wishes to, that you could put it longer, so you could give a period of time, a grace period for people to get familiar with it. I would note, as, as the city manager has mentioned, there already is state law on this. It's, it's written in a slightly different approach in terms of, it's more aimed at what happens with the weapon. So if you have a weapon and that ends up injuring someone, the penalties are much more severe. I, I think this is a different approach, which is simply to try to cajole people in the community to follow safe gun practices. And, you know, again, not the, I think the state has taken care of, and the state and the local district attorney have the prosec, you know, prosecutorial power to do that. I think this is more a, it's just a community effort to encourage people to follow good practice.
Along those lines, because I do believe this council is of the consensus that we should have something like this here, how are we going to educate our public? Can we have something on the website as to how they can secure their weapons and where you find those items or materials and what actually qualifies?
Yes, so if the council adopts a first reading this evening, then we will work on information. There's an FAQ in, in looking at the county and other city ordinances that we will, that we'll follow and do outreach to educate the community on gun, on gun locks as well as storage boxes.
Okay. Just point out, there's one, I mean, it's in the ordinance, but a pretty important factor is that the Department of Justice of the state has a list for each type of weapon, what are the acceptable locks that are appropriate for that particular weapon. So I think a link to that website would be something, would make a lot of sense to have on the city website.
I'd say DOJ's website is not always that accessible or.
Vice Mayor Schneider?
That was, Gina actually got to my comment. On the city website, is it, because I didn't check, so we have information about this program, any additional gun safety laws? Can we, is it appropriate? To me, it would be appropriate to also include, for people who might be contemplating suicide, not sure if they'd go to a website, but can we have information on there about both how to get rid of a gun, if you want to get rid of a gun, and links to where they can go to get help? And I'm sure there are a few other things we can do to make this a top-notch website.
Councilman Lee?
Yeah, I just looked up the price of a gun safe, and the minimum price at Home Depot is 100, $206, so, you know, if.
They should be doing it already.
Yeah, at least, at least we're covering that, so.
Yeah.
I, I agree that.
I would only add, I think you can get one here in Millbrae, too, at Millbrae Lock.
And so my question is, well, I don't know what the price is at Millbrae Lock. So the, the, I don't have a gun. So, and the, so a question is, so a, a building inspector goes in, look at the remodel or whether they can, if they see that there's guns but not in the safe, they can report it? Is that, is that, is that an official observation?
I think it would depend on whether or not we authorize them to issue a citation.
But they can report it?
They can report it.
They, they could also issue an administrative citation if they see a violation.
They're authorized, yeah.
Sorry, did you say, like, a contractor or, like, a city?
Building inspector, like, building inspector goes in a house to inspect a remodeling, and they, they notice there's guns lying around and not in the safe.
That's a good question. Okay. Councilman Aliva?
I think the key here is the education, because we can have all the ordinances and the regulations in place that we want, whether it's state, local, whatever it is. But I think that Councilmember Pappin and Vice Mayor Schneider are in agreement to say that we can put this in place, but if we don't follow through on something for the cause and the effect, I mean, quite frankly, it's very similar to anybody that has a swimming pool, and you have ordinances that say you have to have locked gates and such. I mean, it's danger. There's danger right in front of us. So if we don't get anything on our website or education or in the, work with the schools on this, I think the best source of information for unlocked guns is going to be the kids that live in the house whose parents have the guns that are not safe and in storage. So if we can get the kids to help know that it's not okay, know that it is unsafe, that's going to be the key, the education.
Okay. We have a couple of speaker slips on this. Very quick comment.
My ex had quote-unquote "classic" or "inoperable" guns, and I'd love to see something on the website that says, how does one treat inoperable guns? Because to me, they can become operable. So let's make sure we've got information about that, too.
Okay. We have a couple of speaker slips, and I believe a couple others that have emailed in. So let's start with Jen Sarre with MOMS Demand Action. Either one.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jen Sarre, and I'm a resident of Millbrae, as well as a volunteer for MOMS Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. MOMS Demand Action is a nonpartisan grassroots organization that's made up of both non-gun owners and gun owners. Our mission is to reduce gun violence and improve gun safety for everyone. We believe that the Second Amendment can be respected while at the same time better protecting people through common sense gun legislation. We want to thank this council for considering the adoption of a safe storage ordinance, which would require all firearms in a home to be securely stored in a locked container or disabled with a trigger lock. One small child dies almost every day in this country after finding an unsecured firearm in their own home, a relative's home, or while playing at a friend's house. In addition, two older children, particularly teens, die every day in this country by suicide from an unsecured firearm they obtained from their home or another home. Eighty percent of school mass shootings are done by current or former students using an unsecured firearm that they found in their own home or a relative or friend's home. an unsecured firearm that they found in their own home or a relative or friend's home. Research shows that keeping guns securely stored does not hinder self-protection. A gun can be accessed within seconds, but it does prevent unintentional deaths of children and teen suicides by as much as 85 percent, depending on the type of storage. Finally, storing firearms in a securely locked container also keeps guns from being stolen in a home robbery. In California, cable locks are given for free with all gun sales. There are locked containers you can find for as low as $35. Obviously, they go up in price, and many police departments will give out trigger locks for free. There is a California penal code which partially addresses this issue, but it only applies to homes with children, and it only penalizes after the firearm as injured or killed victims. There needs to be a law in place that keeps everyone safe from firearms before a tragedy happens. The safe storage ordinance is such a law. There are many cities and towns in California that have already adopted the safe storage, and many of them were mentioned earlier, including Burlingame, Redwood City, Foster City, San Carlos, and on and on and on. Many of the towns that do not have them in place are in the process of discussing it, much like Millbrae is. When considering the penalty for violating the safe storage ordinance, Moms Demand Action strongly supports the civil penalty rather than the criminal penalty. We suggest the fine or community service, and this is because we feel that people of color may be disproportionately affected by this law, and we don't think that the criminal penalty is necessary. We feel that having the ordinance on the books will ultimately help to change our culture, much like the seatbelt laws have done. Most firearm owners are law-abiding and will follow the law if it's in place, and they are aware of it. Of course, no law is ever going to be 100 percent followed, and there does need to be a penalty if it is not, but we support the civil penalty. The towns that adopted the safe storage ordinance early on in the process did make it a criminal penalty, but the more recent towns that have done it have made it the civil penalty. And we really thank you for considering that civil penalty. Thank you again for working on this, and we're happy to help in any way going forward, and we thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next speaker is Vince Muzi. Welcome back.
Vince Muzi, Hillsboro. I have a rifle that I bought in 1964. It's a single-shot rifle. I don't have any bullets for it. And I, I heard what Councilwoman Papin said about collectors. The odd thing is, if you're a collector of a gun, you want to display it, and having a lock on it ruins the display. If there's no, if there's no, if you're, I think, just two elements here. You have to have a gun, and you have to have a bullet. If there are no bullets, I, I understand it could be stolen, and I hadn't thought about that. That is an issue. But having a lock on it, if the gun's stolen, locks can be removed. So, I, I just, I, I think you need to consider two things, the gun, and whether there are any bullets. If there are no bullets, I mean, if you have an old gun that has no bullets, what's the danger? You're going to hit somebody over the head with a gun? I don't know. That's my, my comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Muzi, and...
Mayor, just to respond to that.
Yes.
So, the, the ordinance references a statute in the California penal code that determines, defines the word firearm, and I note that it has an exception from that definition for what's called an unloaded antique firearm. Doesn't go into more specifics about the definition of the word antique, we can, we can look into that. But I think it, it at least goes part of the way towards what Mr. Muzi was, was suggesting. So, those would be excluded already under our terms. If you would like more specificity as to what the definition of antique is, we can, we can see if that's there.
Okay. And, city clerk, I believe we have a couple of emails that were sent in on this item?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The first comment is from Marge Colapietro, honorable mayor and council members. I clearly recall attending your goal-setting special session on Saturday, April 13, 2019, when I requested council to consider establishing stronger gun laws in our city. Each of you concurred and agreed to include the issue to your 2019-2020 goal priority list. I'm hoping that each of you kept your freedom-from-gun-violence badges in clear view as a reminder to accomplish your goal within the fiscal year. Here we are, only 10 months and 28 days later, with an action to add a new chapter to our municipal code for safe storage of firearms in residences. I hope that our community members take the time to read the staff report that includes the new ordinance. One section that I found to be quite stunning is the one relative to those persons 24 years old and younger. I thank all of those who worked for many hours, just short of an entire year, to assist council to fulfill your noble goal with this ordinance. I request you take action as recommended by staff. Thank you for keeping your promise to continue to help keep Millbrae safer. Thank you for your consideration. Marge Colapietro, mayor emeritus, city of Millbrae, community advocate, and volunteer. The second comment is from Robert Gottschalk. Good evening, mayor and city council members. I am Robert Gottschalk, and I live at 10 Millbrae Circle. I realize I am walking against a strong current, but here are my views on the ordinance for storage of firearms. If you have rifles or shotguns used for hunting, skeet shooting, or target practice, by all means, lock them in a safe. These are not likely needed in an emergency. Fire department response in Millbrae is slightly under four minutes. I will assume the sheriff response times are similar. Very terrible and tragic action can take place in four minutes. Envision a person or two breaking in the door at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, entering with weapons and with the intent to threaten or violently attack the resident, to force him or her to give up their money or valuables. This is a so-called home invasion robbery. There will be only a few seconds in which to prepare to defend oneself. I cannot fumble in the dark for some keys and move into another room to unlock a gun safe in time to defend myself. It is meaningless to suggest that. I cannot fumble in the dark looking for keys in hopes I can unlock a trigger lock in time to do me any good. It cannot be said, as did the Ninth Circuit, that the measures were only minimally burdensome on gun owners' ability to access their firearms for self-defense purposes. The Ninth Circuit is known for their often nonsensical decisions and often reversed. If I am prevented by the ordinance or by other law to access my firearm in a matter of only a few seconds as necessary for the defense of my life or my person, the practical effect is the same as prohibiting me from ownership at all. The state exceptions, number one, that a firearm was used in lawful self-defense, and number two, that the person had a reasonable expectation that no child would be on the premises, makes sense, are practical, and need to be included as exceptions in the Millbrae ordinance. Thank you for your time and consideration, Robert G. Gottschalk.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Suazo, for reading those. Okay, so, how does the council wish to proceed from here?
I, I think we're of common mind here that we need to move ahead with something like this. I would like, though, to consider the public service for the first violation, because we do have residents here that we need to educate. If they have multiple weapons, you're already up to $1,000, and I, I just think that becomes too harsh. I do appreciate all the moms for being here, and we're going to look for your help as we progress here. But I think we should make the first penalty just a public service sort based, and then move on from there, because I think that achieves the goal that we want to achieve here by really educating our public, giving them the opportunity to secure their weapons moving forward, and hopefully ensure safety all around. So, that would be an amendment I would suggest.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor? If I may jump in here real quick, so, based on the last speaker's comments, on page three of five, there's a table that we do have exceptions in the ordinance. One is if the firearm is physically carried on the person, or if the firearm is within close enough proximity and control of the person, who is legally allowed to possess the firearm, that the person can readily retrieve and use the firearm as if carried on the person. So, I think that that would take care of Mr. Gottschalk's comments and address his, his issues.
Okay.
I wanted to note that, for the record of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Muzi. And, Councilwoman Papin, do you have a suggested amount of community service that would be acceptable to you?
Are the moms aware of what Burlingame did as far as the public service at this point?
I know that they had a fine up to...
Could you come to the microphone and help us, please? I really appreciate that. Thank you.
So, they had a, a fine up to $1,000 or community service, and so the...
Or.
Two other towns, yeah, or, yeah, or.
Interesting, okay.
And so, you know, presumably, if somebody maybe had financial issues, they could choose the community service.
I see. Okay, that, if we could, I, I like the or, because again, we, some people may not be able to afford this at all, but we want to achieve the goal.
Sure, and the goal is really education, it's really changing the culture.
Right.
I, I think the, the issue, though, with the home invasion, we are not anti-Second Amendment. We, we definitely want people to be able to feel that they can do that. But I will say that you can get a locked container, and you can bolt it to your bed if you want, or your nightstand. It is a locked container. You can have a padlock that is lit in the dark so that you can, it takes seconds, and I've, I've gone shopping for them. It, it takes seconds. So, he would be able to defend himself, no question.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I do like the or, so we can actually find out what a good public service alternative would be, and then keep the fines as addressed here. So, you could, if, for your first offense, either be fined or take the public service aspect of it. I think that achieves both of what we were looking to do here. And I do think it's very important that we educate the public on our website, as Councilmember Schneider said. I think the suicide numbers and all of that, everything needs to be included to really be impactful, and I would suggest that as well. So, if we could, I don't know what Burlingame did, but if we could start with that as an amendment moving forward, or the penalty, because again, if somebody inherited three rifles or something, they're already up to close to $1,000 anyway, and I, I would prefer not to penalize our residents, but just to educate them moving forward.
So, for the first violation?
It would be the 220, or whatever it is here.
250 or.
250 or.
I would try not to do that.
I saw some nods that seemed to be in agreement with the community service. I, I think if we do that, we would need to stipulate it in the ordinance, and I don't know, what do you think is appropriate, six hours, eight hours?
I, probably six hours.
Six hours, community service, or $250?
Yeah. And again, that's per violation, so, people, I, we need to be very clear here. I don't, I don't think that was clear. That's going to be per weapon.
Personally, I think I'd prefer to take this back, look at what Burlingame did, and come back to you with some language to address that.
Yeah, I think some jurisdictional consistency might be helpful, but they went to 1,000 right away, and I'm not willing to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Would that be the second reading then, or it would have to be a first reading again? Okay. So, then I guess there's no action to take then, assuming there's concurrence, right?
What I want to do is get them all and get them in now, so that when we bring back to you something, you're going to be able to act on.
I'm, Mr. Mayor, if I may? I think one of the most important aspects of this is that if your gun or weapon is stolen, and you didn't have it locked, okay, we don't want to penalize, we want you to report that weapon lost here. And I think this, your, this ordinance really does that, encourages people that, hey, you know, that, you need to report any weapon that's stolen, because those are the ones that are used mostly in crimes. So, we're not penalizing or deterring people from that, and I think that's what's important in this ordinance.
Okay. Vice Mayor Schneider?
I, I think what I heard, the Moms Demand Action was largely targeted at children, but do you have additional advice for guns that could be used in spousal abuse?
There are laws against that.
I, I understand that there are laws against that, but I can tell you from family experience of people who tried to call the police department to come in and look at guns, and what happened to those guns, even when there were restraining orders involved. So, it's not always so clear-cut as that. Maybe that's time for a different ordinance, or better education, or, you know, I couldn't even tell you where the close, well, we're not supposed to know where battered women's shelters are, but what the current process is if you're a battered woman, because they are just, or a battered man, or a battered, I don't know the, the correct term, a place for them to go to get assistance in that situation, but I have familiar experience with that.
And for...
Do you have a...
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So, if there's a restraining order at all, the law enforcement goes out right away and takes the weapons. There's no questions asked. You cannot have one.
Okay.
I'd like to see that on the website, too, then.
Okay. Councilwoman Aliva, and then let's move on to the next item.
So, the policy's great, and I'll support all the different amendments to it, and I thank you very much for bringing it to the forefront. But just a month ago, in South San Francisco, there was a suicide, because somebody was a very dear friend to me, too. And he was a very young man that, that shot himself, very, very, in a lot of trouble. And it had nothing to do with anybody being able to report an unlocked gun. So, we can take this forward, and we can have another policy in place, but unless we educate the people with something that goes after this policy in place, and I say it again, that if somebody was in his home and noticed that there was an unlocked gun, and was able to report it without having to put a penalty on it, on somebody that was troubled, it would have maybe saved a life. So, the education, I'm okay with any of the amendments, and you can call six hours of the community service, you can call $1,000 or $250, but if we don't educate our young people and our families to what could happen if we don't take care of people that are under stress with a gun around, then it's useless.
And we do have, you know, buyback programs that, that come up pretty frequently in this county, so I think it would be good to promote those the next time, a buyback program, if anybody wants to give up an unwanted, unneeded weapon.
We've supported twice.
We have, yes.
But the buyback programs have always been, one was down in Redwood City, and I think the other was in Daly City. And maybe the, the need is greater up there, but I would like to see the county move those buyback programs close. I mean, I don't know, if you really want to get rid of your gun, driving to Redwood City is probably not a big deal, but if you don't have a car, maybe it is a big deal. So, they should be moving these buyback programs around, and not just in certain parts of the county.
Okay. So, I think we have direction to amend the ordinance to include a community service option on the first amendment, on the first violation. So, let's bring that back at the next meeting and move on to, let's see, I'd kind of like to do the items where we have public comments. Let's see, we have a couple comments for item nine, so maybe we can do...
Don't we vote for, for first waiving?
No, because it has to come back for a first reading.
Well, we've in the past just wait, just did the vote, and then had it amended for the next, next reading.
Or agreement on, on the additions to the ordinance, so just even a concurrence that we will include a fine or community service.
There's a couple other changes I'd like to make. If you want to have city staff, if you want to have city staff issue citations, we're going to need to put that in the first, we're going to need to add it. So, I think, I think we have some changes to make, so I, I think we should bring it back.
Okay. Should we list those to make sure that at least a majority of the councils in concurrence with the changes?
Yeah.
So, then we, there's no confusion when we bring it back? Okay. So, the first is, is either the fine or community service, and we'll make a determination on what the appropriate amount is based on other cities within, within the area. And then Mike?
Right. I'm, I'm just looking in terms of the things I heard. I want to look at the... I want to look at the, each gun is a separate violation language. I want to make sure that's clear. Is it the consensus that you want that, or?
Yes.
Okay. And then, let's see. Also, just looking at, I mean, I know Councilmember Pappin raised the question of search warrants. I think I'd like to look a little bit further. There are administrative search warrants that are used in code enforcement cases. I haven't done one ever, but there may be some ways. But I'd maybe like to look at that a little more and just give you some additional information on that. And then in line with the public comment, just, I'd like a little more in the definition of antique guns and collector guns and how those are addressed because that doesn't seem, I'm not sure that's been fully vetted, so.
Some of us think we are ourselves antiques. So it'd be interesting to find the definition.
Let's move on.
Do we need clarification of what inoperable means?
I'd like to get that clear. I mean, there's antique here, but I didn't see inoperable in the definition.
To me, inoperable is something else. Because I was told, oh, the firing pin was removed.
Right.
But how do non-gun people know that?
Right.
So clarification would help.
Yeah. Well, I think the main thing is we have to have the language in the law so that somebody can figure it out, and it's got to be, you know, understandable.
Okay. Let's go on to item number nine, designated fund agreement for the Millbrae Recreation Center between the Millbrae Community Foundation and the City of Millbrae. Sorry? Okay. They're waiting. And we do have several more items. So if we can keep our comments brief on each of these and try to move through them. Yes?
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This is relating to the designated fund agreement between the Millbrae Community Foundation and the City of Millbrae for the Millbrae Recreation Center. As you all are aware, on July 16, 2016, a major structure fire destroyed the Millbrae Community Center. And right away, the Millbrae Community Foundation set up a designated fund to bring in donations that people were willing to give to help rebuild the facility. And MCF has raised nearly $70,000 in the fund. And moving forward shortly, the city will commence a fundraising campaign to help raise funds for FFNE, that is the furniture fixture and equipment in the new facility, as well as putting together a policy for naming rights for rooms within the new facility. Since the city is not considered a tax-exempt organization, a partnership with MCF to collect these funds would help individuals or companies donating have an added benefit. So this might encourage individuals or organizations to donate more. And entering into this agreement will allow the city to move forward with an established fundraising program and campaign, and move forward with marketing and outreach as well to help bring in funds for the new recreation center. And as noted in the staff report, we recommend that City Council approve the proposed designated fund agreement to move forward with this campaign. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Couple of quick questions, then. I'm fully in support of this, and I thank the Millbrae Community Foundation for working with this. My questions are, if a group is giving funds, how would they specifically designate? And I know it's talked about in here, but would there be another layer of paperwork? Or how would they know what they want to do, that they're supporting what they want to support?
Would you like to come up here?
Well, if I may.
This goes along with naming rights.
So if somebody specifically donates $100, and they say, I want this to go to a tree or a bench or something specific within the recreation center? How do we know that that money is actually earmarked? Is that the question?
I think City Manager and I had a discussion on this earlier today. The Millbrae Leos Board met on Sunday. They identified how much money they want to try to raise in the next couple of years. If they gave that money to the teen center, how would we know that it goes to the teen center? And then the City Manager said, well, they could actually give that money directly to the city as opposed to MCF. So maybe we're talking more the private. If I'm United Airlines, United Airlines wants to donate money that pays for the teen center, how would we know that that's specifically to the teen center?
So we set this up to accommodate people who want to, for instance, show up to another fund run. And that money would be pooled, and it would go into the Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Fund. It would be of small dollar value, but in the aggregate, it could make a big difference. So for instance, the Rotary Club has been holding $11,000 from the last fund run in anticipation that there'd be a fund to put it into for the community center. So there would be that fund, which would be sort of the, you know, the spaghetti feed fund or the, you know, whatever, paver fund or however we decide to raise money. There would be a secondary fund, and that fund would be donor-directed, and it would have to be at a very high dollar level in order to make it make any sense. So it couldn't be just you put 25 bucks in and you say, I want that bench named after me. We would have to come up with policies for how that would work. But essentially, with the donor-directed fund, in order to qualify for the tax deduction, because this is a 501(c)(3) we're talking about, there have to be certain regulations within that for the donor to be able to say what they wanted the money to be used for. Otherwise, they're buying something, okay, and not going to get a tax write-off. So we have to make sure that that's structured properly to comply with law. Then the third fund would be a sponsorship kind of fund, which is like the Leos could do, or United Airlines could do, or the Rotary Club could do, or Peninsula Chinese Business Association could do. Or if I wanted to donate my house, and maybe I wanted to do a charitable remainder trust that I donate my house to MCF. MCF sells the house, buys me an annuity, and I get to live on that annuity, but I get the charitable deduction for it. And the remainder left after I die goes to the community center rebuild. All of those things could be accommodated in that third sponsorship fund. So essentially, we're trying to look at all the different ways we could serve the community to get the community center rebuilt, but also furnished because it needs furniture, it needs drapes, it needs coffee pots, it needs computers, it needs workstations, it needs phone systems. So there are all sorts of things that can't be done with, for instance, just money to just build the structure. There's also the possibility of expanding this to other phases of the rebuild. So for instance, Peninsula Healthcare District might want to contribute funds for a gymnasium. Or some developer who's coming to town might want to have their name on the cafeteria portion or the kitchen portion. Or the Lions Club might want to have its name on the kitchen portion. Or, these are just ideas. So what we're trying to do with this contract is provide the vehicle to make it all happen.
Great. Thank you.
Quick question?
Yes, Councilwoman Pappin?
So we had talked about a donor wall. I guess it's these yet-to-be-defined, the naming stuff and all, is that going to go through the foundation, or will that be done through the city?
No, that would be done through the city. So we're working on, you know, once this agreement is approved, and now that we're moving forward with reality, we are also working on donor wall, what amounts will, so for example, get you a dedicated bench, a dedicated tree, get you naming rights to a room. So that will be forthcoming to the City Council for review and approval shortly.
And then it would still be run through the Education Foundation, so they would still get the tax write-off?
Not the Education Foundation. Don't confuse.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Millbrae Community Foundation, which is different than Millbrae Education Foundation. Thank you for bringing that up because we like people in the community to know that there are two different foundations.
Correct. And we're proud of both of them. Thank you.
And this one is not the one that's the Education Foundation.
So once that's defined, it could be set up through this foundation?
Correct. Then we'll coordinate and with the foundation and say, here's kind of the shopping list for donations, definitely.
I just want to note, it is legally permissible to take a tax deduction on funds donated to a government entity. But there are those who may not wish to give their money directly to a governmental entity who prefer to have a community foundation control how that money is used. And so this helps set up that arrangement. So if people want to have, you know, for different reasons, may have motivations where they'd rather have the foundation hold the money and control it. But ultimately, you can give money to a government agency and get a tax deduction.
Okay. Let's move on to a public comment here. We have a couple of speaker slips. Janet, I don't know if you would have anything more to add?
Well, I did want to speak to those different funds and to let the viewers know that this is an opportunity for you to be involved in making something really special happen in the City of Millbrae that will serve a lot of people. It will serve kids, it will serve seniors, it will serve everybody who needs a place to go when we can once again go and socialize with each other. Our community center that burned down was that kind of special place. This will be an even bigger, better, more modern facility that has more resources and I think will be very well-used by the people here in our community. And it's important for us to have that kind of community place, a place where we can all go to do fun things with our friends, right? I'd also like to suggest that you might want to speak to our president of the Community Foundation, which is Maureen, who I'm sure has submitted a speaker slip. But I'd like to make one more point in that this designated fund agreement is very much based upon what we did with the Lions Scout House when we turned it into the Millbrae Community Youth Center. So we use the same format. In that, we were working with the school district and the city and the Lions Club. And what happened was, we built a coalition of all kinds of community service entities here. The Rotary Club, the Lion Club, the Millbrae Community Center was, I'm sorry, the Millbrae Community Youth Center was rebuilt by a lot of people. You know, kids got involved, local contractors got involved, people donated items, PCBA got involved, church groups got involved, Rebuilding Together got involved. It really felt good that this was a part that we all put our hands on and made it happen. And the Community Foundation, the Millbrae Community Foundation wants to replicate that and make this community center restoration that same kind of ours. It's ours. It's not just the cities. We are the city, and it's going to be our rebuilding project.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Fogarty. Maureen Davis?
As Janet said, I'm Maureen Davis, and I am the president of the Community Foundation right now. Janet is also on the board of directors. A lot's already been said, so I'm going to shorten the little notes I took here. The Millbrae Community Foundation was founded many years ago, and it was really founded to help the rec center back then. Over the years, we've expanded our interests, but we still have a focus on the rec center. As McKenzie said, within days, we were raising money after the fire, for the fire, for the community center. Skipping forward, what's nice about this agreement, as it's also been mentioned, but it's going to be a safe place for these donations to land. And the process by which we give the money back to the community center or rec center is going to be transparent, and it's going to be a formal process. So anybody who's worried about where the money went and how it got spent, they're going to be able to see that completely. And as has been mentioned, the charitable deduction will hopefully encourage those people to give larger amounts of money. So we're grateful that the city sees us as a partner for this important task, and we hope that you will approve this agreement tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Vice Mayor Schneider?
I'm sorry. Mayor is trying to move this on. Just to let the public know, I'm an advisor to the Millbrae Leos Youth Club, and we did have this discussion just Sunday. So the target that they've set, I don't want to do it yet because they still have to have their membership vote, but it's going to take them a couple of years to get to that. And the discussion that we had, looking at their finances, is it better to give to MCF every year or to hang on to the funds themselves? No, I'm not on the subcommittee for the rebuild of the rec center, so I'm asking the question now. You don't have to have an answer now unless you do, but those are the questions that at least this one youth group would like to know. And they're advisors, so we know how to tell the kids what to do.
So the idea is that this fund will also grow in interest. It will be invested in a safe investment, most likely a CD. And the funds that we raise will be pooled so that the CD will be that much larger, get you that much more interest on it. Now, if the Leos could do better on their own, they're of course welcome to do that. But we're anticipating that the funds won't be needed for a couple of years yet, particularly FFNE. You've got to have the building free can fill it. And so the idea would be that we could pool those funds and get a better return on them than if everybody holds on to their little pot and then drops it.
Very good. Hopefully, we'll make that really clear. Thank you.
All right. So we have, I don't know if the motion is for this item or if it was from the previous item?
This one.
This item? Okay. We have a motion from Councilwoman Pappin and a second from Councilman Lee. Your votes, please.
Item number nine passed unanimously.
All right. I said, let's try to get to the ones that have speaker slips first. The only other speaker slip I have at this time is item 12. So can we go to that one next? I don't want to keep people late here.
Do I have it?
No. Don't want to keep people later here than they need to be.
Do I have it?
Parkino.
Yeah. Go still. Do you want Mike or that?
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Again, Tom Williams, City Manager. I'll stand up here because we do have a little PowerPoint presentation. This is an information item on the establishment of a parking authority. What we wanted to do is just kind of explain what the assets are, what the situation is with parking and parking management, or lack thereof comprehensively within the city, and what the establishment of a parking authority could do for us. And then get concurrence of the City Council to move forward with this plan, to reach out to business owners and property owners mostly within the downtown area, and then bring back a resolution to establish a parking authority. So just in terms of background, as I mentioned, the city does have a large inventory of free public parking spaces in around the downtown core, as you know. We have received feedback from residents and business owners. Also, I have a couple of graphics of a survey that we did with the Economic Vitality Advisory Commission that puts parking and parking management as one of their top issues that they've identified for economic development in the downtown. And then there's concerns about the unavailability of parking and the need to establish more parking in the downtown. And one of the ways to do that is to increase time limit parking and introduce parking meters. There is evidence that time limit parking versus that same parking space with a meter turns over 30 to 40% more. So very effective tool. So there are new planned and proposed development projects that will also generate additional parking beyond the parking that they supply on site. This will be visitor parking, parking for just general daily needs and buying power that would be associated with this new development and shopping within the downtown and the central core. Millbrae is one of the only or last remaining cities that does not have paid parking in its downtown, in any city within our region. There's also potential to generate significant revenue, as I mentioned, from paid parking that can be used to work within parking improvements within downtown core and residential permit parking programs within the residential neighborhoods that are impacted with the spillover of parking demand from downtown within the residential neighborhoods. So as I mentioned, this is a response from a questionnaire, and I just want to quickly go down to the bottom, which the lack of parking is one of the things where identified by members. by members of the Economic Vitality Advisory Commission as one of the things that they least like about downtown. And then that followed up with a listing of what they believe are the top priorities necessary to revitalize downtown, and that was, as you can see, 10 out of 10 on introducing parking meters or parking garages for additional parking and peripheral parking garages. So, this is just a quick overview. There are seven city-owned parking spaces in the downtown, starting with the one that is just east of the parking garage and west of Peter's Cafe. We've just called that Lot A. And then between Victoria and La Cruz, that's the parking lot that the Farmer's Market is held on. Parking Lot C extends a full block between La Cruz and Hillcrest, fronting Magnolia. Then we also have the parking lot by 7-Eleven, just to the north of 7-Eleven, that extends between El Camino and Broadway. And then moving further north, it's not on the map, we're calling that Lot E and F. There's a parking lot next to the Millbrae Furniture, and then the parking lot that's actually within the area off of Park Boulevard. So, these are just quick overviews to refresh your memory. There's 25 parking spaces on the lot just east of Peter's Cafe. The parking lot at Farmer's Market, there's 52 parking spaces. The large parking lot at Magnolia, there's 104 parking spaces. Then the parking lot between Broadway and El Camino, just north of Hillcrest, 64 total parking spaces. This is the parking lot that I had mentioned. I didn't realize that this was a publicly-owned parking lot. This is over on, off of Park Boulevard, there's 56 parking spaces. And then this is the 22-space parking lot that's just south of Millbrae Furniture. So, what does all this mean? All in all, that's 323 parking spaces. If we value that right now at a market rate of 50,000 per parking space, that's $16.5 million in assets that the city currently owns. And in addition to 300, or in addition to about 650 parking spaces, parking meter spaces within the downtown area, we achieve close to 1,000 parking spaces that we provide today. And so, you know, the recommendation is to continue to work towards that and better manage those assets and better managing, and better manage our parking inventory and work towards creating, you know, valuing these assets and creating an opportunity that we can invest and actually take a comprehensive look at all of our downtown parking issues as well as issues citywide within the neighborhoods and generate parking turnover as well to assist with parking issues that do exist for our downtown businesses, our restaurants, and we get a lot of complaints. And I will note that in doing a little bit of outreach, we were approached by several restaurant owners on Broadway that are desirous of the city looking at installing parking meters. Now, that doesn't mean that's necessarily the answer. Tonight, we're just looking to, as an information item, have the City Council authorize us to continue to move forward. The next steps would be to conduct significant outreach to our business owners and property owners and then develop a resolution to move forward. I will note, just real quick, in the parking ordinance of 1949, Mike, 1949, under California law, every city is actually a parking authority under that law. And so, that provides us the opportunity, not by ordinance but by resolution, to adopt a resolution delegating to the City Council or to the City Council designating the mayor to appoint members of a parking authority. But once we come back, we'll make recommendations for the governance of the parking authority. I mean, we would recommend that it would be the City Council, wearing a different hat, just like you would, if you recall, the previous redevelopment agency. And then, it would be separate distinct actions and financing if we would get to that point than general law or the general fund of the city. So, that's a quick overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay. Sure. Vice Mayor Schneider?
Given that we're also working on a BID for downtown, if we move forward with the parking authority, will that have any impacts on the business owner's vote for the BID?
So, that's a great question. I mean, we've continued to work with the downtown property owners. We're not quite at over 50% support, but I think that this is another mechanism that is actually a tool to help generate more business. I think having parking turnover and parking availability actually increases value to the property owner. So, I think through, again, education and outreach, it does not make a difference, but this is an added tool in our toolbox to help economic development and help the downtown property owners and businesses succeed.
Second question. I've been reached, or been sent some documents about street greening, and we've been having a discussion of mobility, so specifically people who have a difficulty time walking. So, whether they're using one of the paratransit programs that need to be dropped off fairly close to them. If we're, the report talked about street parking. I would just have us consider that some of that street parking might need to be drop-off and loading zones, somewhat like what San Francisco has done with Uber and Lyft, so that they're not, what is it called, triple parking out in there. But just consider the mobility issues that are coming in from complete street programs.
Councilman Lee?
Yeah, I think studies have shown that once meters have gone into a downtown, particularly one that's distressed or stressed, it increases businesses in the downtown because people feel like, well, they could put money into the meter, they should get something out of it. So, they tend to buy something. I have a question about the parking lot on where the Farmer's Market is. How many spaces is taken up at a Farmer's Market every Saturday?
So, I believe all 52 parking spaces. I believe that entire parking lot is closed for the Farmer's Market, but I don't know if--
Plus, I think a few street spaces.
I'm going to look to Key Lim to see if he knows the answer to that, because I believe so, but I don't know the exact answer, so I might have to get back to you.
The whole parking lot is actually used by the Farmer's Market on Saturday.
I'm thinking we can actually get more parking if we put, move to Farmer's Market onto, into maybe La Cruz, where we will lose less parking spaces, and there's not a lot of traffic on that anyway. You know, we can move to City Hall parking lot, too. But my point is that we can free 52 parking spaces for businesses on a Saturday morning.
This is one of the most impacted areas, and this is where we've received feedback from the surrounding businesses for the city to look at increasing parking and parking turnover. It's very congested.
Yeah, I recall, it might have been a few years ago, I don't know if, as I recall, I believe we had talked to the Millbrae Square owners about possibly moving the Farmer's Market to the parking lot across from City Hall over there, and it was not successful, as I recall.
It wasn't a no. It wasn't a flat no.
It wasn't a flat no. Okay. So, maybe it would be worth, you know, at least having that conversation again. I don't know if it was them that were not interested, or maybe the Chamber was not, it was the Chamber that was not interested in moving it.
If I can just comment on that.
Yes.
When I talked to the Chamber about it, somewhere near there is a storage facility where all the tables and awnings are kept. So, it's very close to the Chamber's office and the ease of getting those tables and tents out. So, if there was a discussion of moving the Farmer's Market, I hope we'll work with the Chamber, but they're going to need a new storage location.
All right. Yes, Councilwoman Oliva?
I think this is awesome. Thank you for bringing it forward, and I think that, you know, we all have to be very fiscal-minded to what our assets are, and this is a huge asset for our downtown and to move towards the BID. But I don't want to leave out the neighborhoods, because we all get the phone calls all week long, and I think it's very important that we take care of our people as well as our downtown. So, in conjunction with this, I'm hoping that we are prepared to get some neighborhood meetings together and make sure that Loud and Clearly Elder gets taken care of.
Sorry, Councilman, Councilwoman, when you say that the neighborhoods are taken care of, are you saying that we need better enforcement in residential areas? Are we saying that we need meters in residential areas?
No meters in residential. Yes, thank you for clearing that.
So--
Enforcement, and I think that particularly on Elder, they're talking about possibly wanting to have parking permits for their, so they could park in front of their own home during the day.
Okay. Yeah, I think that has been a question, concern, is, you know, are we doing enough enforcement of the areas where, you know, there are permits and, you know, two-hour parking? I've been told that, you know, residents are paying for permits and there's no enforcement in their neighborhood, and so what are they paying for? But, yeah, I, looking at the staff report, it mentions Magnolia would be included and much of Magnolia. Hopefully, you're only talking about the area next to maybe Millbrae Square and maybe next to that parking lot and not the residential portion of Magnolia?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that we want to study, is the parking authority boundaries.
That define the boundaries.
Should it just be within the central business district and core of the city? Or should we, you know, have a citywide geographic boundary? In talking and answering some of the questions of the council members, 300 block of Elder, we are moving forward with notification of the residents. Is it 75%? Seventy-five percent. Seventy-five percent of each of the property owners on a block have to agree, I think I said it was a simple majority, but it's 75% have to agree to permit parking, residential permit parking program. So, on the 300 block of Elder, I know Mr. Peakler has been very anxious in moving forward with that, and so we are addressing that, and it is an immediate concern for us.
Just since you have the mic, can you tell them how the process works?
Sure. I'll hand it over to Key. I left my notes on my cellphone to go paperless, because Key texted me, so Key has the information, so I'll turn it over to Key Lim, our public works.
Thank you.
Asking community development directors.
So, we have a petition process in according to the city ordinance on the Title IV, Public Safety. It is on the preferential permit parking program. So, we mail petition to actually the current boundary for permit parking ended to the west at Poplar. So, we are proposing to City Council, we will bring an item back to Council at the next council meeting to expand the residential permit parking boundary to Palm Avenue in the interim period, and also including Richmond Drive. We are going to expand the residential permit parking boundary on the west side all the way to Palm Avenue from currently, which ended at Poplar.
What about Elder?
Elder is actually one block east of Palm, so that will include it. So, the two blocks that will be included will be Elder and Palm, and all the way up to Richmond.
And you're mailing out, sorry, are you mailing out a petition now?
We mail the petition now, I believe, today to all of the newly expanded area, but Council, we need to adopt a resolution at the next council meeting in order to do so.
Okay. Yes.
I live on Palm Ave. I live on Palm Avenue. Again, the house is in a trust, so it's not mine, but I'm going to have to get clarification of whether I can be part of this discussion then.
This is not on the agenda tonight.
I know, but I'm just putting it out there because you just talked about Palm Avenue.
Okay. And, you know, I've probably been more hesitant than others on the council to pursue permit parking. You know, I think, I know we're one of the few cities on N.C.A.T.O. County that does not have permit parking in our downtown. I think, in my opinion, you know, our downtown needs help, and I certainly don't want to do things that would discourage people from coming into Millbrae. It was interesting to me to hear that several business owners have asked for this. It was a bit surprising to me. But I think, you know, if we do go down this path, I would like to see a bit more community outreach, maybe a community meeting if that's, we might have to wait a couple of months before we do any special meetings with the virus outbreak, but I think it'll be a shock for a lot of people to see permits come in. And, you know, people have lived here many years, they're used to parking downtown, might have to drive around the block once or twice to find parking, but know that they can park and not have to pay a meter, and it's going to be a big change, you know, if we do go down that path. So, I think outreach and getting public feedback is going to be critical. We do have a speaker slip on this item from Vince Muzi.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick.
Yes.
On the residential permit parking program, although we're going to bring a resolution that expands the boundaries, that does not mean that every block we would implement residential permit parking, because each block must have at least 75% of the property owners agree to the implementation, or just expanding that, you know, if that's the case, then that's the boundary. So, I wanted to clarify that it's not automatic.
Thank you.
Vince Muzi, I live in Hillsborough, but I own a home, my mom's home on Elder. And I have to tell you, the problem on Elder is not commuter parking or people in the downtown. We've had probably a two-year period where at least two homes at a time on the block are being renovated. My mom's home right now is having the bathroom redone, and so between workmen and whatnot, that's what's created the problem on the 300 block. It's not, I mean, I can just tell you, there's at least five trucks that get parked there every day, and they're workmen who are working on these different houses. What I put the slip in for, I didn't know you were going to go that way on Elder, is the parking district. And I really encourage you to look at two, there's two really big issues here. One is what you do with the downtown and the spaces that the city, the thousand spaces that the city already has or controls. The other has to do with Site One. And I encourage you to not, you don't have the same issue with Site One that you have with the downtown. Here you have an opportunity to do something that is going to make a difference with regard to the relationship the city has with California High Speed Rail, with BART, and with Caltrain. But if you wait six months before you initiate something, you are going to lose that control. You need to create, I mean, I would encourage you to create a district for Site One immediately or as soon as council will allow you to, so that you can begin to look at the area for a parking structure that would create the opportunity to do all of Site One. You've been waiting for redevelopment to come back. You don't need redevelopment to come back. You have the opportunity to have your own redevelopment through a parking district. And if you don't take advantage of it, you will lose control. You have control, you have a plan. The Millbrae Station area plan provides for parking, you don't have an environmental issue, you have the authority to do it, you have the opportunity to do it. And I really encourage you to not take six months. You should be able to get it done in two and a half, and I would encourage you to move that way. It doesn't, it doesn't require you to do anything in the downtown, although I have to tell you, I've lived in Millbrae and done business in Millbrae all my life, you need parking meters, okay? It's odd to me that a city gets a fraction of its sales tax recovery. You get 100% of your parking tax. If you have a problem with the business community, maybe think about cutting your sales tax.
Thank you, Mr. Muzi.
And go for the parking.
Okay. Thank you. The next speaker is Ron Raquel.
Hi, good evening, City Council. I'm just kind of shocked about the expansion of the parking permit that you are suggesting. I live on Willow, and there is absolutely zero enforcement. We pay for parking permits, $25, it's a drop in the bucket, but there's actually zero enforcement. I feel like I've had to snitch a few times on people that have parked in our neighborhood and feel that the city is very lax in that, and it's due diligence on the city. If you're even expanding that up to Palm Avenue, where is the enforcement? I stay at home almost, pretty much, all day, and there's-- I stay at home almost pretty much all day, and there's zero enforcement, and are we going to have our residents be snitches? I understand that the city is a pretty wide city, but you're, I've brought this up on numerous occasions, that there's no enforcement, and it's just shocking that you want to expand it when you don't even enforce what we're doing right now. I mean, that's great that you want to have the parking permit, but where is the teeth in this? I mean, it's senseless. I mean, we had this, when we initially put the parking permits on Willow, we were fearful of the BART parking situation, but now it is going to be exasperated since we're going to be losing the parking lot down at BART. So I mean, what is the city's solution to enforcing the parking permit that's already in place on Willow and Lewis and Poplar already? And that's my two cents. I just wish there would be a little more enforcement with this. I mean, it's senseless. I mean, I feel like we're just collecting money and just doing nothing with it, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Raquel. All right, so this is only an information item for tonight, so we do not need a motion, but we will continue to follow this and continue to do outreach and perhaps bring this back at a later date.
Clarification?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to see this move not six months from now, but if we could move forward with this, but I do agree with the mayor being open, and I would like to also reiterate that I have been approached by some of the businesses asking for this, so that is out there, but let's get a clear message from our businesses and our residents. Thank you.
Okay.
Can we, my question is, can we go forward with creating a parking district, but as to how we're growing the permit area, do that as a separate process so that that public outreach process doesn't hold up the creation of the district itself?
No, I'd like to look to our city attorney, Mike Conner, and I do believe that we could set up two different boundaries, or three different boundaries, so to address the, you know, Mr. Muzi's question about establishing a parking authority over in the transit area. Immediately, I think a resolution, we could do that, we call that, you know, Parking District A, then we can go Parking District B in the downtown, and then address the residential. Let me just real quick to address the citizens' question. The problem is, we don't have a comprehensive parking management plan. We don't have any revenue coming in other than, you know, $25 per permit. That's not enough to augment our parking enforcement in our, either our own or contract with the Sheriff's Department. This allows us to comprehensively look at the city, generate revenue up to about $3 million a year, and put that back into our parking program, not only capital improvements for parking, parking garages, but also the management and enforcement of parking. And so that's, that's kind of, you know, the objective of, one of the objectives that we're trying to achieve here.
I would prefer that we do the part that we need around the BART station as quickly as possible. And then just to go somewhere else, I received a vice mayor letter, but it's unsigned, and it's about the 500 block of Poplar Avenue and cars that haven't moved for months and months, which then makes it difficult for our street cleaning program, and with all the street trees you have in there. So when we do start working on that parking permit, I'm going to turn this over. I have no way to respond back to the resident, but they sent me photographic evidence. But I think this could work in nicely with getting back to where we used to have a street cleaner that actually cleaned the gutters and not the middle of the road.
All right.
Let me just, I want to clarify something. So the process for creating a residential parking district is completely separate from the creation of a parking authority, one or two of them, except for the fact that, as the city managers indicated, if there's revenue coming in from the parking authority, that could be used towards more enforcement, but those are separate processes.
Okay, thank you. And let's go ahead back to item eight, the public hearing regarding the underground utility district.
So, Ms. Mayor, just real quick, one of the things I'm trying to do on these items is get concurrence of a majority of the council that, yes, move forward, and is there agreement to move forward quickly with a resolution to create a parking authority in the transit area, including TOD 1, and then come back and create Parking District Area 2 within the downtown area?
Yes.
And regarding to the Transit Center, I don't know if this connects with the comments about TOD 1, but California Drive, there's people parking there all day for BART, especially now that BART's removed several hundred parking spaces. So I think if anything, that's an area where we could put meters up right away, and doesn't have any impact, positive or negative, to the downtown.
Yeah, correct. And that was a direction of the City Council several months ago, and we're moving forward with our traffic engineering analysis to come back to the City Council, and actually, that would be the first installation of parking meters is on California Drive and extend the parking and meter parking on the city's own lot there.
Great.
So that, that's in progress. Thank you.
Okay, so item number eight. Sorry for pulling everything out of order.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the City Council, Key Lim. First, please replace page three or four of the staff report that City Manager Tom Williams handed out earlier at the beginning of the City Council meeting.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Page three or four.
Mr., Mr., do we need to open a public hearing?
Yes.
Just declare it open?
This is a public hearing item, Mr.
Public hearing is open, okay.
So tonight, we'll be discussing the undergrounding districts along Millbrae Avenue from Palm Magnolia Avenue to Menorca Way. So what is?
How do I do next? It won't go.
Nope, it's went backwards.
And press down.
So what is undergrounding? Undergrounding is actually undergrounding of the overhead power transmission line in Route 28. I would take a minute explaining what is Route 28. So Route 28 was created in 1967 by California Public Utilities Commission. It sets aside some funding so that each of those local jurisdictions can have money to underground their overhead transmission power line. So as for Millbrae, we receive almost $80,000 in credit a year, and then if I recall, I went back into history, historical file, we did an undergrounding project back in the mid-'90s up in the Cappuccino Parking Triangle area. So we have about $80,000 a PG&E Route 20 credit that we receive every year. So far today, we have approximately $3.4 million in our credit to allow us to move forward with another undergrounding project. And also, according to Route 28, we could also borrow up to five years of future credit. So with that being said, currently, we have approximately $3.8 million in credit so that we could do some undergrounding power line along Millbrae Avenue. So the reason why we are moving forward with a resolution tonight, asking the City Council to adopt a resolution, is because CPUC established a new rule late last year. They are going to be starting to divert funding from inactive jurisdiction like Millbrae. Inactive, the definition means that any district or city that hath not have any undergrounding project or activity in the last eight years will be deemed inactive, and they would have the opportunity to divert funding to other city that in need of Route 28 money. So we've been notified 20,000 of our credit would likely be re-appropriated if we do not adopt a resolution, so it is important that we do so tonight. So currently, under Title, Chapter 8.30 of the Millbrae Municipal Code, City Council need to conduct a public hearing and then accept public comments, and then adopt a resolution forming an undergrounding district, and this is what we are asking the council to do tonight. So public hearing notice was actually sent out on February 28, meeting the 10 days noticing requirement along the project frontage, and those are about 41 homes, and I will show you the boundaries of the undergrounding district. So the undergrounding district will be along Millbrae Avenue, like I said at the beginning, from Magnolia all the way up to Menorca, about eight to 10 blocks or so, and they'll involve 41 homes at this time. So here's some of the pictures showing some of the overhead transmission line along Millbrae Avenue, and they are not the prettiest sight. So based on engineering estimate, we think it will take about $3.9 million to $4 million to underground the full project, but we could do that in phases, or we can start planning the project now and maybe look at some other sources of funding to complete the project. And we have until the end of 2024 to do so. So the recommendation tonight from staff is that council open the public hearing, which you already did, and accept public comments, and close the public hearings, and adopt a resolution, a resolution forming an undergrounding district. So the next step, once the council adopt a resolution forming the district, we will be working with PG&E with the agreement and bring the agreement back to the council for execution and action, and also any type of construction project will be brought back to the council for action. So with that, I'd like to take any question that the council may have for the public.
Any questions? Yes, Vice Mayor.
I'm all for this. Let's go forth, let's do it. Questions? What will Pete, because PG&E is going to be doing a great deal of the work, what if they get close to any trees at all that they decide they want to cut down? Do we have measures in here to protect trees, and/or if they do accidentally cut something down, that we at least get a four to one, or whatever we've learned from the experience on Richmond Drive?
Hopefully, by the time that we have the undergrounding project underway, we would have adopted our city tree ordinance, and in which we will have a replacement ratio and the type of street trees that we would need PG&E to replace.
So I didn't know in the rare, where as's, I'm not a huge one on where as's, but would it hurt to include something specifically that talks about trees, since there's at least two incidents I know where PG&E has just come in and cut, including the ones that I didn't know about, the ones behind Bayside Manor, huge eucalyptus trees?
So actually, Vice Mayor Schneider, with the undergrounding project, there will not be a necessity for PG&E to remove those trees, and that's the reason why we are putting all this overhead transmission main underground.
Okay. I just don't trust them, so I just want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on them.
Well, I think that's a wonderful thing about this program, is we're undergrounding the utilities, and it will actually protect trees rather than, you know, the easement and the issue with the trees growing into the power lines.
And I don't want to get sidetracked here, but do we have any update on what's going on with Richmond Drive? Is there any trees coming? I know, I saw the little shrubs that were planted, but are we ever going to get trees back there?
Short answer is no. This is what that we have worked with PG&E come up with, and we actually carried the landscape theme to the first three blocks all the way up to Lincoln Circle. We have put in some drought tolerance ground cover, and we have those 15-gallons crepe myrtle, and that will take some time to grow and mature.
And so those crepe myrtles grow at a mature height of what is the height limit that PG&E will allow?
All right, well, that's better than nothing, I suppose. All right, so I think we need to close the public hearing first. Well, let's just go with the motion we already have up on the board. We have a motion and a second. Your votes, please.
The motion to close the public hearing passed unanimously.
Okay, and do we need, I guess we need another, if we can clear the board? And a motion from Councilman Lee, and a second from Councilwoman Pappen to adopt the resolution? Your votes, please.
Item number eight passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lim. Okay, next we have item number 11, which is accepting the fiscal year 2019, 2020 mid-year budget report and adopting a resolution amending the adopted budget.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ms. Emily Boyd. She's our interim finance director. I think most of you have met her, and I have introduced her at the previous meeting. So Emily, welcome. She will be providing the staff presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Emily Boyd, interim finance director, as the city manager has stated. We're here to talk about money. So this is the mid-year budget update for the fiscal year 1920 with proposed adjustments to the operating budget. Normally, a mid-year budget update would take place around, would be effective December 31st, and you would hear it sometime in January. We're a little bit behind schedule here, so the figures that I'm giving you tonight are as of February 28th, so it's closer to where you're actually hearing the report. This slide compares the budget to actual on the general fund revenues. As of February 28th, 67% of the year has passed, therefore, we would expect 67% of the revenues to be, of the budgeted revenues to be collected. And you'll see here that, as the chart shows, the revenues for property tax, TOT, and all other revenues are tracking close to 67%. Sales tax will always lag a little bit behind due to the receipt of sale tax revenues. Sales tax will always lag a little bit behind due to the receipt of sales tax revenues two to three months after they're collected at the point of sale. And note that TOT is 26% of the general fund revenues, and sales tax are estimated to be 10% of general fund revenues, so that's 36% of our general fund revenues come from sales tax and TOT. That's a pretty large proportion. We're watching revenues very closely in these categories because it has been reported that there's a drop in hotel occupancy, as well as a drop in taxable restaurant sales. We do not yet know how that will impact us in the coming months. Remember that the numbers I'm giving you tonight are as of a point in time, and we, like I said, we just don't really know what's going to happen in the coming months. Additionally, the coronavirus could affect the public's attendance at restaurants or in hotels, and additionally, we haven't had a recession yet. And as you know, I'm sure, the economic site is, the economics are cyclical. We have a growth period, and then we have a decline period, and it's been a while since we've had a decline period, and the economists are predicting that a recession may come pretty soon. We don't know. Back in 2018, I was being told by economists that the recession would occur in 2020, but it hasn't hit us yet. So we don't know, what I'm saying to you is, we don't know what the future is. So we are keeping a very close eye on our revenue expectations, and we're proceeding very cautiously to limit expenditures to things that are absolutely needed. So here's the adjustments that are being proposed to the general fund revenues. It's a decline in general fund revenues of $228,411. That consists of, the property tax revenue has been reduced by $581,000 due to a countywide shortfall in funding property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees. This is offset by an additional $362,000 coming from ERAF, which is the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, so we've got some excess funds there. And we are projecting an additional $11,000 increase in other property tax categories. So the net change to property tax is a negative $207,000. Sales taxes projected slightly up based upon the consultant muni services projections. And like, as I said, remember, this is a point in time. Franchise fees are slightly up. Increase in TOT is attributable to residential rentals. Business license collections have been improved. The use of money in property is interest income and rents on properties, and it's also going up a bit. The grant adjustment is a deferral of a One Bay Area grant in the amount of $370,000, which is being deferred until next fiscal year, plus a $260,000 grant from Transportation Development Act for a net reduction of $127,000. Service charges are projected to Service charges are projected to increase slightly over the prior budget estimate. Operating transfers in includes $30,000 correction to the recognized obligation payment schedule, and $163,000 reduction in the amount needed from other post-employment benefits. That $163,000 will remain in the OPEB trust, and we can use that in future years. So let's take a look at general fund expenditures. Expenditures also should be 60%, 67% of the budget if you're tracking. All of the departments here are below budget estimates for this time of the year. Public safety is tracking just a little bit higher, but that's due to the contract encumbrances that have been entered. And as you probably know, an encumbrance is a planned future expenditure. So we're feeling pretty good about where the expenditures are at. We also saw some expenditure declines of $622,235. This is due to a police unfunded actuarial liability refund from the sheriff of $1 million. This reduced the police expenditures. Offsetting that expenditure reduction is a correction to police and fire OPEB in the amount of $304,000, and an increase in services and supplies of $132,000. That results in a net decline in expenditures of $622,000. So here we have some special projects that were roll-forwards that we need to mention to you. Development impact fees, $104,000. Business Improvement District contract, $65,000. Finance system upgrade, $61,000. Information technology upgrades, $151,000, and a fee study of $11,000. So these are additional expenditures. So let's talk a little bit about other funds. On Measure W, we weren't, the city underestimated those revenues. We weren't sure what we were actually going to get for that. So now we know we're going to increase that budget by, that revenue budget by $140,000. The community center fund benefited from the sale of land in the amount of $2.25 million, and staff is asking for an appropriation of $1.9 million to cover costs in the community center rebuild project. The, in other funds, the sanitation fund has an increase in salaries and benefits, supplies and services of $320,000. The sewer modernization fund has interest from the cash being held by the fiscal agent for the 2018 wastewater bond issue, so that's an increase of $65,000 in revenue. There's an increase in the water fund services and supplies budget of $125,000, an increase in stormwater services and supplies of $1,500, and an increase in the garbage fund services and supplies of $10,500. That was that slide. So the requested action tonight is that you receive the report, and then you adopt a resolution approving the recommended budget adjustments. Do you have any questions for me?
Okay. Thank you for putting this together in a fairly short amount of time that you've been here. You know, I think in light of the virus, I wouldn't feel comfortable projecting any increase at all to the TOT. I think it's likely going to be a decrease, and obviously, we don't know what it is at this time, but, and I know we do have the short-term rentals, which had not been accounted for, but, you know, personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable today, including $121,000 increase, from all we know about the impacts on travel. And if that's taken out, does that affect how we, if it's, how we balance a budget or the deficit?
It does. What we, what I've presented to you in the general fund is a balanced revenue and expenditures. We've already received most of that $121,000 on the short-term residential rentals, and I agree that we don't know what's going to happen with the TOT, and we've been hearing that hotel room occupancy rates have fallen, but we don't know how, by how much.
I mean, I think it would be good to account for some type of a cushion there, assuming there's going to be some type of reduction between, going back the last month or so, at least for some time forward.
If you want to take the $121,000 estimated budget revenue out, you can certainly do that. That's your option. What it will do, though, is it will take $121,000 then out of unreserved general fund balance.
Understood.
Unless you want to reduce some other expenditure.
Right.
So I think, you know, obviously, we're in unique times. Things are changing fast. We are moving forward with pulling together the new operating budget and capital improvement program budget for the next fiscal year. Things are going to change, and I agree with you. I think our revenue is going to decline. There's no question about it. To what degree that's going to decline is something that we're analyzing, and we will be bringing that, keeping the city council updated. Obviously, if, as we understand it, occupancy is down, last report, at 25%, I think that's probably hovering close to maybe 35% or 40%. And then with the cancellation of a lot, I think there's three or four major events in San Francisco, conventions that have been canceled. I think that we can expect that we're going to realize some difficult times here in the short term. So just be prepared for that. We're analyzing it. We'll bring back a sound management recommendation and plan fiscally. We just need to figure out where it's all going to lay out and how we're going to stabilize.
Okay. Yeah, and I know it's hard to come up with estimates now, very imperfect information, but, you know, again, I wouldn't feel comfortable voting for a budget that says it's projected to increase from the information that we have at this time.
So I think there's two things. One is this is balancing the current fiscal year budget.
It might be a deficit without, you know.
That's correct.
Correct. And then the other is because now we're getting into, you know, the, what the last quarter of the fiscal year, we'll be bringing forth the new budget that by law needs to be adopted by July 1st. And I'm more concerned, I mean, I'm concerned about the current budget. I'm much more concerned about the adopted budget in fiscal year 2021, 2122. I think that if we do realize in this last quarter, or the third and fourth quarter of this fiscal year, if we need to tap into reserves, our reserves in excess of city council adopted policy. So I think there's enough room there for this fiscal year. Going into next budget cycle is really where we're going to have to, you know, realize some, you know, stricter budget tightening and belt tightening.
Good. Councilwoman Pappen?
Why haven't we spent the OPEC, Obed, or that money? That's, that's like given money. Why isn't that being spent?
$163,000.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pappen, the Oback money is programmed for federal fiscal year 2019, 2020, which starts in October. So the project will go out to bid this summer, and with the construction happening in the fall of this year.
We can't get it done any sooner, given the market and everything?
Unfortunately, no. MTC had programmed the money into federal fiscal year 1920, a couple of years ago, when we were programmed for the Oback 2. I think that was Oback 2 that you are referring to? The OBAG, Oback Funding to MTC?
Oback Funding, yes. So, I mean, what's the plan for expenditure on that?
The expenditure will happen this year in the fall, when we actually paving Locksboro Drive, and the money is earmarked for reconstruction of Locksboro.
That's what it's earmarked for?
Yes, ma'am.
It'd be nice to know where we are on our street paving as we progress, but let's spend the money when we get it, shall we?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Oliva?
On the sheriff's.
Microphone, please.
On the sheriff's overpayment that we received, is that a one-time payment, or is that to be projected?
Sorry, speak closer. I'm still too far.
Oh, the overfunding? Did I over?
The unfunded actuarial liability refund from the sheriff.
Exactly that.
Yeah. Yes, that is considered one-time occurrence. However, we've been advised that there is another year coming, so we may have, we're estimating somewhere between $900 and $1 million in additional refund coming, probably in the next fiscal year.
Does that just stay where it is? Or is that actually come to us?
What they've done is they've reduced, they've subtracted it off of their contract bill to us, so we've gotten the savings that way. Instead of paying them, you know, this amount, we've paid it less than $1 million.
That helps their expenditure.
That's correct. It reduces our expenditures.
Vice Mayor Schneider?
I've always been confused about sales tax, especially as we lose places like Osh. The current sales tax numbers, are they including the new e-commerce sales tax? The one that we're supposed to get for all internet sales, based on the formula that the state was still trying to figure out?
I don't know the answer to that, do you?
They do. Yes.
We are getting some of that money?
Well, the projection does include the internet sales tax distribution to see which is a formula.
Okay. So we don't know about that. And it's probably, I'm new on the budget subcommittee, so I'm looking forward to having the budget subcommittee first meeting, but with what's potentially happening right now with the decrease in property values, at least what I'm seeing down in, farther down in Silicon Valley, the properties that we've earmarked for potentially selling for the rec center, have we looked at that? Or is that a capital project? And just tell me, it'll come, it'll come later. I'm just concerned now that we won't get as much money as we were hoping to get from those two pieces of property.
Well, our economic outlook is that properties are not declining in value, and that's really not one of the issues that we have in terms of revenue. It's sales tax and TOT taxes is the big issue, because TOT's tourism and the occupancy rates are down. But not, property taxes is, is strong and continues to.
And will continue?
Well, I mean, I think that, you know, we've seen such a significant increase in property values over the last decade, that there's always a flattening out, but I think it will continue to remain healthy. We're starting, you know, we're seeing properties turnover, we're seeing new development, we're going to have the entire BART property under possessory interest tax on the east side that will, you know, it's not taxable now, that will be paying tax. And as we see new development occurring, those assessed values will increase and generate additional property tax for us.
Can I follow up on that? Can you explain the vehicle license, property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee?
I would love to explain that.
Yeah. It's a semester.
Well, I'm not sure how well I'll do at explaining it, but I'll give it my best shot. The vehicle, the property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees is a hangover from triple flip from a few years ago, as you probably know. Yeah, yeah, exactly. These funds come through the county. The county has an allotment of funds that they distribute to all of the cities in the county. And this year, the county discovered that they were short something like $42 million in distributions. And so all of the cities in the county got hit a little bit in less money than they normally would get. And our share of that less money was $581,000. The county has stated that they have gone to Sacramento to say, please backfill this, but I don't know that they have gotten an answer to that yet, whether the state will backfill it.
And the $42 million, is that due to miscalculation from the county?
I'm not really sure what happened with the county, but I can try to find out for you.
I guess, is it, is it like a calculation error, or is it, does it represent some type of actual revenue?
A revenue loss?
An actual revenue loss?
I'll have to ask the county to find out for you.
I believe it's a revenue loss from the city of California withholding the VLF.
And the VLF, okay. All right. Councilman Lee?
Thank you for your report. I fully support the city manager's assessments, and I think he's already taken some prudent steps to limit some of our, to hedge our financial status of the city. We definitely know we're going to take a hit. His question is, how big's the hit going to be? So I would, I fully support taking, look at our discretionary spending. And also, I've always advocated this too, but looking at our discount rate too, at the same time, because I don't believe that per assumption, was it 6% or 7%?
7%.
7%. I think that's really over-optimistic, especially right now. So I don't know, city managers, if you could just wave your magic wand and decide we're going to do, assume a lower discount rate?
Appoint me to the CalPERS board and change some of the policy, and definitely, we can have a magic wand that's raised, for sure. But that's, I mean, that's a hurdle rate, right? So that's a hurdle rate that CalPERS says that if we don't make this investment return, that we're going to bill back, you know, municipalities every year, that we don't meet our return. That's compounded with the, you know, the GASP 34 and the unfunded liability that they've tagged us all for. So not much we can do other than, you know, manage our way through it, have some reserves, and continue to kind of muddle through and advocate better investment strategies by CalPERS, quite frankly. I mean, at the end of the day, that's, I've assessed it. I mean, I was city manager in 2008, when it was the worst recession in the history of California, and CalPERS returns have been miserable. We have every year, it seems, that, you know, every county has a grand jury that does an investigation on local municipality, and will come to find out. If you look at CalPERS returns since, you know, change of policy and since 2008, where they don't invest in property anymore, they have other policies, they don't invest, their fiduciary responsibility has really failed their customers, which are local municipalities. So that, that is a huge problem that needs to be addressed, that I think municipalities have been silent on. But that, what does that do for us today, right? I mean, we just have to, you know, continue to manage. I think, you know, the reserve policy for the unfunded liability was a great decision by the council at the time that you did that, and that will certainly help us in our time of need in situations such as that we're going to be facing here in the next year.
So I'm sorry, please correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, the discount rates come up a couple of times in the past. The discount rate is an assumption, right? It's not, you know, changing the discount rate doesn't provide actual savings to us, right? It just, it's just an assumption of what we're going to be paying down the road. Is that correct?
Well, it's an assumption by CalPERS on what they can earn on the money that they're holding. And then what they don't earn, they come looking to us for it.
We have to make it up, but there isn't.
Early on, like in 2000, right, it was, it was 8% or 8.5% what was the return. CalPERS was meeting that. So in circa 1998, 99, 2000, 2001, CalPERS did not bill cities at all. There was no payment. And then 9/11 hit, and then that was the VLF take from the county or from the state to balance their fund, and triple flip and all this stuff we're discussing tonight. But then what happened was, CalPERS never recovered. Their investment strategy changed. They never recovered from 2002 recession, 2002 recession, and the 2008 recession hit, and they have never recovered. And they lowered their, I call it a hurdle rate, some call it a discount rate, meaning that, you know, you've got to make this return on investment, and then they will not bill back local municipalities. So they moved that from 8% to 7.5% to 7%. So they lowered the expectation, meaning that, hey, at least we can get 7% and not bill you back, but they haven't even achieved that return. And then, so that, you know, it's, they have investment policy, they don't meet it, but they say, well, then, we don't meet it, we're going to bill you back. And then that's the large bill that we get from CalPERS, and all municipalities get from CalPERS every year.
But there isn't really something that we can do that would change that bill, right?
There's nothing we can do correctly, except for advocate different investment policies at CalPERS. And I think that they have a fiduciary responsibility to their clients, us, the municipalities, that they haven't met. But I think what we do, Mr. Mayor, is we recognize it, we budget to it, we prioritize it, and need to, you know, recognize it as such.
And that's what I'm advocating, that
And that's what I'm advocating, that we assume a lower discount rate. So, then, when they do come short, we have the money available to cover that, rather than having to cut services elsewhere or move money around. So, if we already know, if we think that it's going to be 6%, and we can plan for that and say, okay, we're going to sock extra money away and save that for, to make up that 1% difference.
Yeah, plan for 4% rather than the 7% that CalPERS has stated. I think the other way to do that is to look at the reserve allocation within the budget, and as we've set up a PERS reserve fund, just look at how much money then we can put into that PERS reserve fund, and then use that in times of, you know, perhaps what we're headed into in the recession that would save us.
And we know that they're not going to make the 7%. Definitely this year, due to even just from the virus thing, so we know they're not going to make 7%.
Three weeks ago, I thought that they would definitely make 7%. Now, you know, if you look at where the markets have been, it's very, although they don't, one of the things I don't know that, based on the current market conditions that I want to study, is because of CalPERS investment policy, maybe their losses are not as much as might be anticipated, because they have such a narrow width of what they invest in. So, you know, it's something that we need to take a look at.
Which would be a time to get out of fossil fuels.
Well, they're not. I mean, that's one of the industries that they do not invest in any longer.
Okay.
Tell, maybe give us an idea of what they are investing in.
Sure, yeah, well, we'll research that, and we'll bring back, or I'll do a memo to the city council on what their current policy is.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Schneider? Now, or Budget Subcommittee, but San Francisco voters just approved a tax, I understand it could either be restructured as a tax or a fee, on vacant storefronts. Now, part of me is hesitant, because clearly the best thing for Millbrae is to get the BID done, and I wouldn't want to do something that discourages landowners. But a vacant store pulls down the whole area on that. So, I would like to see that we consider fee or tax on vacant storefronts.
I think the BID is an important consideration, and I would.
It certainly is.
Yeah.
But it passed overwhelmingly in San Francisco.
I question the constitutionality of that, but we'll see what San Francisco ends up with. They also put a cap on biz, or office space, so let's just see how they do.
Okay. So, we had a motion, looks like, from Councilman Lee. I mean, I mentioned earlier the possibility of perhaps reducing the TOT budget. Do you have any concurrence on that?
Not yet.
I think the assumption is pretty safe.
I think there's going to be an increase this year? Everything that we've seen?
We have the next fiscal reporting right around the corner.
Well, we're just trying to plan ahead and say, let's just be prudent. We know they're going to take a hit, so why don't we just reduce our expectations and not, you know, spend certain amount of discretionary money to, so we have it on hand, so we can make our payroll, right?
City Manager, it's my understanding that you've already taken some actions on what we're spending?
Well, yeah, I took an administrative action to freeze all expenditures within the general fund, you know, two weeks ago. And so, the department heads are notified not to, you know, we have an expenditure freeze. So, that doesn't mean that we stop in our tracks and we don't, you know, continue to pave roads and move forward with our capital and our water and sewer fund. This is, you know, travel and purchase of office supplies and equipment and that type of thing.
And if you walk into a restaurant, you'll notice that there's hardly anybody in the restaurant, so you can expect a huge hit in sales revenues.
Yeah, I think from our management point of view, and Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, I think if it's the desire of the council, and I think it is good planning to reduce that amount, because we are going to see a reduction, then we can come back and we can plan for it, and as we close the books on this fiscal year, then we can make adjustments and bring that back to the city council, with the knowledge that, you know, right now, we're $130,000, you know, over budget because of the lack of revenue in that particular category. That would be my preference, and we could work to that.
We keep TOT flat, and, you know, hopefully, we can beat that. But again, I don't think it, I mean, no disrespect to anyone here, but I don't feel comfortable voting for, voting to approve a budget with a TOT increase, from what we know.
Yeah, I think these are good, solid discussions. I mean, as we said, things are changing every day, and it's just happening so fast right now with cancellation of events and tourism. So, I think we can come back to you with that, with a balanced budget, and say, okay, here's how we've come up or recommend, you know, budget cuts to achieve that.
Question?
Or use reserves, you know, at that amount, which is very minimal.
Yes, Councilwoman Pappin?
So, I understand on the horizon, too, might be an extreme drop in interest rates. So, how would we position ourselves to take advantage of that, or how would that impact us?
Well, I think it's negative for us. I think that the Treasury bill now is at, you know, 0.5%. So, our investment, that's another issue, our investment returns are going to decrease.
Well, but weren't our investments, were we not making some good money on, I mean, everybody's been, all the jurisdictions, they've been making huge returns on investment up until this point.
No, they have, so this goes way back, if you recall, the Orange County issue with the Finance Director of Orange County, the junk bonds, and then the laws change. We're really limited in what we can invest, which are basically LEAF funds, local agency investment funds, which are basically T-bills, Treasuries, which I think at the height between 2008 and now, were maybe 2% return at the height, and now they've, you know, a very swift and rapid decline down to, you know, just a half a percent. And there's rumor that in the economic markets, that they're going to go down, you know, to about 0.3.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
Other jurisdictions, I mean, okay, MTC has a huge budget, but they've made millions on their investment up till this point, literally millions. So, I mean, we should be looking at our investments. I mean, they have a bigger lump to work with, but, you know.
So, the quarterly investment schedule that we approved this evening in the consent calendar, the current portfolio yields an average of 1.99%, while the longer-term portion yields 1.76%. So, it's low in most jurisdictions in California, I believe, and we're not going to lose that much money if it goes down further.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're on the downside of this, that's a given. But sorry to say, CCA, everybody else has been making some money here, and I thought we had evaluated, taking a look. But beyond that, that's not going to help us.
We're governed by state law, and we can only invest in a very limited amount. We can no longer invest in the stock market, we can't buy, you know, property. It's not at the jurisdiction of the city council or an administrative decision, it's dictated by state law, and it's very, very narrow. So, I don't know where these other, we can look into it and find out what they're doing, but for us, as a general city, we're very limited.
So, do we need, are we going to bring this back or move to approve with the amendment?
I think move to approve, and then as we work to close out the year-end budget, then we'll bring those adjustments to the city council, and then all work administratively on looking for ways to reduce our expenditures by the amount accordingly, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Lee, and a second from Vice Mayor Schneider. Your votes, please.
Item number 11 passed unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Only one left, item number 13, the informational report on the minimum wage ordinance.
So, Mr. Mayor, Alisa Tierney, our economic development manager, went home sick. So, we've got two different options. We can continue this for two weeks and have her, she's the one that's on the line, Sher Key was going to step up and give the report. But I think I would recommend, since Alisa went home sick, that we wait for her to come back, because she has most of the information and knowledge on this.
Okay.
Move to continue?
Yeah, I think that's fine, especially since it's an informational report. So, let's continue that till next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, let's move on to council comments, and maybe we can start with Councilwoman Pappin? Okay, maybe Councilwoman Aliva?
Shoot, I'm not ready. Hold on. Well, I have senior advisory committee and Hart Board meeting.
Take the mic, please.
I'll come back here. So, Hart Board meeting and city council, it's been a long week in my life, let me tell you. So, I apologize for not being so prepared, but I promise you, I've been busy and working hard.
Okay.
One question. If we could get to the senior advisory committee, they're really anxious to know on the general fund, what the next step would be. And I didn't get an answer yet. So, if I can bring that back to the meeting by Wednesday, that would be.
Sorry, what's the question?
We talked about goal setting, and the seniors are anxious to know what the next step for the general fund would, uh, general, general fund, I went from budgeting, sorry. The general plan on how we're going to take that forward. They would like to be involved with that. So, if we can, if I can have something to bring to them by Wednesday, next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, that would be great.
Okay. How about Vice Mayor Schneider?
Sure. I want to thank staff for helping CCA's Bike Pedestrian Committee find a new meeting space. My understanding is our BPAC meeting for the county will be here at the city of Millbrae on the last Thursday of the month. So, thank you, staff. I attended, and thankfully, not on the city's dollar, the SFO roundtable paid for me to go to the UC Davis Symposium on Aviation Noise and Emissions. And critical to Millbrae was an additional training I took, because the airport is going through an EIR or EIS process for airplane expansion. So, I took an additional training and then spent some time with one of the FAA regional administrators to learn how we might better keep an eye on what the airport is doing. Some of the cool things that I learned that is different than our own roundtable, we have pretty much concentrated on noise, but apparently, within the purview of roundtables, because they're officially adopted by the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, is we can work on emissions. And one of the biggest new emissions that they are concerned about are ultrafine particulates. They had some health departments come and talk about this, and I'll try to do some kind of report. But it looks like a lot of the good studies are coming out of CTAC in cooperation with local universities and county health departments. So, given our proximity to the runways, we should be looking at that. And I will be bringing back to the airport roundtable, hopefully, our ability to be working on emission issues, too. There was also a discussion of sustainable aviation fuels. In many ways, San Francisco Airport's been a leader for that, so we're one, the airport itself got kudos for that. The good side is it can reduce up to 70% of the bad pollution out of jet, burning jet fuel, if you can go to sustainable fuels. The bad side is that there's less than 2% available. But of that available, we're getting some of it out of San Francisco. It was also a really great presentation on the greening of airport ground operations, which could drastically reduce air pollution as well as noise. So, this is coming out of LAX. There was quite a bit of discussion, the event was held in San Diego, so lots of activities that San Diego's doing in preparation for sea level rise, and inclusion of capture of stormwater to reuse on site. So, kind of covered a pretty good range of that. The one downside, I would say, there were two different sessions dealing with electrification of personal aviation vehicles, general aviation, and whether or not we're going to have helicopter taxis flying all over us. So, that is something to keep an eye on. But that, that was my main activity. Absolutely incredible event, very technical, lots of information to share.
All right, thank you.
Oh, and I'm sorry, one other thing. In terms of deaths, since we are celebrating International Women's Day, this past week, the original Rosie the Riveter passed away at age 95. She was from our own local area. I actually, I think Jackie Spear had her come to an event, so I think we've recently heard from her. It's our law, she was one tough lady, one of those women in non-traditional working environments. So, my condolences to the family of Rosalind P. Walter, the first Rosie the Riveter.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lee?
The Penisah Clean Energy, they are, they're looking at, into reach codes and trying to get reach codes passed by cities. Millbrae's looking into it. A few cities have already approved it. Reach codes are trying to green living, building, building, putting regulations and ordinances to build in buildings to make it more green. And looking, and also, there's a movement to buy PG&E's utility distribution system. So, I think there's a movement to try to get many cities, particularly San Jose and San Francisco, are interested in purchasing their, the system. I think that's a ways off, but that's one way to want to address the safety issues and reliability issues, and also the accountability issues that we've all been struggling with. And they continued, they hired some new personnel to address ways we could, PNS Clean Energy to provide clean opportunities for low-income houses, and so that everybody can benefit from, good benefit in participating and greening our community. And I think that'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pappin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Quickly, Mills High School is doing their performance of Legally Blonde. This, they had performances last weekend, and the final performances are this weekend, so encourage everybody to check that out. The Youth Advisory Committee has a chess tournament coming up, and I'm sorry, I don't know the exact date, but it will be in the library there, so encourage everybody to sign up there. Thank you to the city manager for appearing at MTC. We are working hard to keep BART accountable to cleaning our stations. San Mateo County has five different stations, and there is obviously no regular cleaning. And we would also like to improve public safety at all of our BART stations. We will note, too, that there has been some signage put up in the Millbrae station after 15 years. I guess better late than never as to connecting to Caltrain, but nothing as to Samtrans. So, obviously, still a work in progress as to our BART station. Thank you for the mayor for speaking for us at Caltrain. We are still trying to work through some major, major issues here. Encourage the cities throughout San Mateo County, who are also having problems with the Caltrain plan and high-speed rail plan, to keep up the battle here. There are valuable alternatives that we are offering. Happy to see Assemblymember Chu's Bill 2057, which is seamless legislation, which this council passed. Alameda County passed, Santa Clara County, the cities passed, trying to encourage other cities throughout our region to also support the principles of seamless transportation, which would be helpful to all of us. And Assemblymember Mullen has also signed on as a co-author there, so we're working forward on that one. I have a note here, and I can't remember what it's, so it's Project City has proposed, but I can't remember what that means now. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you.
Late.
Okay, yeah, as Councilwoman Pappin mentioned, I attended the Caltrain High-Speed Rail Local Policymakers Group a couple of weeks ago, and the meeting was dedicated to high-speed rail and the business plan. As others here have mentioned, the business plan has only one very, very brief reference to the Millbrae Station, and it's in regards to eminent domain around Millbrae Station to be able to put in their surface-level parking and extra tracks and extra station area. So, you know, just mentioned for the record that the city of Millbrae is not in agreement with that portion of the business plan. And I know we do have an official comment period, and I believe we will be submitting an official comment before that deadline, which I believe is in April. So, because high-speed rail needs to get this done and get their EIR certified to be able to hold on to some federal funding that the administration has threatened to take away. I do have a meeting scheduled with the local high-speed rail director coming up in a couple of weeks, so hope to, says that they are perhaps willing to help do some, I don't know, some joint solutions that could. know, some joint solutions that could potentially be a win-win for Millbrae, so we'll see how that goes. So, he also attended, a few of us attended the Council of Cities Dinner two Fridays ago, and there was a good presentation about the county has a new emergency evacuation system, and some new software that provides information both for residents, as well as for local police and fire services, to help residents know what the best way is to evacuate in the event of a wildfire or another emergency. They did mention that, you know, all fire chiefs in the county are trained on the system, and perhaps at one of our upcoming meetings, we can ask our chief to give a presentation. It was actually an extremely impressive program, from what I saw, and it shows, you know, what wind patterns would be, you know, if there's a fire in a certain place, you know, where is the fire likely to go from there, and therefore, how to get out. And it also connects with, you know, Google Maps, and tells them to, you know, in the event of emergency, do not send vehicle traffic through a certain area if people are trying to evacuate. So, it would be great if we could have maybe a presentation at one of our upcoming meetings, just a brief presentation for the public. I think that's all that I have for tonight, but we will be closing the meeting in honor of past Lyons District Governor Donald Stanaway, who is also a Millbrae business owner for many years. I believe a member of the Burlingame Lyons Club, but a business owner here in Millbrae nonetheless. And he will be having, there'll be a visitation this Friday from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Chapel of the Highlands, and a service Saturday, Saturday morning, I believe?
Saturday morning.
Yes, Saturday morning at the Methodist Church in Burlingame. But if you'd like more information, please contact the Chapel of the Highlands on that.
One more?
Yes, Councilwoman Pappen?
So, a community family member, not, I mean, throughout this, Greg Sinclair suddenly passed away, I guess, today. So, he has his father and the whole family. So, if we could also close in his memory as well, please.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we will adjourn for this evening, and we will be back on March 24th, 2020. Thank you very much, and good night.